Welcome to the Wairika City Council meeting for January 21st, 2025 is now 5:31. We, this is our question of the meeting for closed session. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Looks like there's no public comment at this time, so I will close public comment and we will go into our closed session. We'll call the order of the Wairika City Council meeting for January 21st, 2025 is now 6:42 PM. Please join us in those pledge allegiance. All right, welcome everybody. I just want to remind everybody in the audience and in our, our council members to silence their cell phones at this time. And just for, to let everybody know that our heater is not working, that's why it's a little chilly in here. We did have closed session this evening at 5:30 and we have no reportable action on those items that were for discussion, so no reportable action. Okay, we'll move to item number five. This is for special presentations or, and our announcement. This time slot is for informational presentations, appointments and awards to be presented by the city council or to the city council. It looks like we have the Knights of Light presentation for Discover Siskiyou and the City of Wairika 2025 State of the City presentation by all city of Wairika department heads. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, we have Heather Chippolini here tonight. Is that correct on the last name? Okay. Uh, and she's going to present for Discover Siskiyou on the very successful Night of Lights.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Heather. I'm here with my teammates Amanda Brown and then Sarah Eberens, who is on Zoom waving. Hi Sarah. Thank you for having us tonight. Um, like Mayor Middleton said, we are offering a recap of the 2024 Wairika Night of Lights event held on December 7th. We will try and keep it brief. I know you have a very packed agenda tonight. At first, we really wanted to thank the city council and the city staff for their support of this event. Not only financially, but just, you know, the staff and public works and the fire department all work really hard to make this event happen. And everyone was just so wonderful and supportive to work with. So thank you all very much for making this event successful. We do have a report prepared with data that we collected using our location analytics software. But before we get into that, we did want to show a video created by Mindy with pure Siskiyou that I believe the city actually commissioned to have made. It's wonderful. So let's take a look. And with that, Sarah is going to, there we go. She has her slides and she is going to walk you through her report and then we're happy to answer any questions.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Um, I didn't hear the sound, but I hope you guys felt the holiday magic from that short video. It was definitely a fun-filled hustle bustle type of evening and I feel like it's the perfect kind of event to wrap up a great year. The mission of our event was uh, to generate downtown business revenue and sales for Wairika. Increase overnight stays at Wairika lodging properties and also to foster identity and community pride. Next slide. I'm there. Okay, um, this was the third year that Discover Siskiyou is overseeing this event, so I'm just gonna give a little bit of a rundown of what it included. We had 26 artisan vendors, nonprofits, mobile food and beverage vendors. There was an engineered light and entertainment show. We had photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus with a photographer. Um, that was a free activity for the public. We had a magician roaming around, a balloon artist. We had face painting. There was a bunch of different crowd engagement activities with cash and prizes. Multiple photo opportunities, as you can see with the Wairika letters in the background of this slide, um, we brought that back for people to take photos in front of. Holiday decorations, market lighting and much more. Also, many of the downtown businesses had their doors open and offered promotions, activities and just kind of holiday extras taking advantage of the added crowds to the downtown area. Next slide.
We're there.
Okay.
There Sarah.
Yes. Um, so according to Placer AI, and that's a tool that we use for business attraction, gathering analytics and other event attendance data, there was a total of 3,000 visits to the Wairika Downtown District during the three-hour event. This was a greater visitation rate than we actually recorded for the Mount Shasta tree lighting. 2023, we had 2,700. Um, it was actually a pretty rainy day last year, so in 2023, so it was a little bit less. And then 2022, we also did have 3,000 recorded. Of the recorded visits, 94% of those are recorded to reside in Siskiyou County and the estimated economic impact of the event was $108,000. We saw increased website and Facebook engagement from previous years, which is showing the annual growth of the event and establishing this having a positive reputation in its current format. And we also received a lot of positive feedback from community members, vendors, sponsors, brick and mortar businesses, and we engaged with visitors from Southern Oregon, the California coast, Redding and beyond. So we see this as another success and I look forward to bringing this event and others to Wairika moving forward.
Any questions for us?
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions from the council members or comments?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right. Mr. Ledbetter, what's up next?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairika City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, and Cindy, if you don't mind pulling up the slideshow. So we're gonna give a state of the city address here this evening, looking back on 2024 and looking ahead a little bit as to uh, what we have in store for 2025. And so I'm just gonna kind of go over um, a few of these items and each department head is gonna come up and they're gonna speak to their own particular department and hopefully really help educate the public as to everything that is happening, celebrate some of the big victories and look forward on some of the bigger projects like the fire hall and paid fire staffing that we have here in the future. Uh, next slide, please. So we've really broken down four disciplines for the city and really these four disciplines could be utilized in really any western western city, but primarily in the state of California. Coming in about three years ago with staff, we looked at what our shortcomings were and one of them were, uh, one of them was obviously revenue generation and increasing fees and making sure that the cost of business that we were providing for the city was actually getting compensated and we weren't subsidizing that cost on building permits with regular tax dollars that should be taking care of our parks. And so ultimately you'll see that we had done a lot of updating to our fee schedule. We had very successful with the 1% sales tax initiative. Uh, we're considering possibly in 2026 to do a raise of 2% on the transient occupancy tax to really match uh, what the, what the rest of the local jurisdictions in the county are currently doing. Right now, if you were to stay at a motel or hotel in the city limits, you would pay a 10% transient occupancy tax. Uh, and that money goes right into the general fund and ultimately helps, helps us actually pay to service the community. And so it's about a $1.2 million currently that goes into roughly a 10 and a half million dollar annual budget. Uh, we have our IGA with the intergovernmental agreement with the Kuduk tribe for Rain Rock Casino and they're obviously completing their phase two, which is the final phase of their project and the final payment for that IGA comes to, comes to us in March when they finalize opening up the hotel. Uh, but we're looking at future Kuduk development and discussing with Rain Rock the possibility of a future IGA or an intergovernment agreement. So we would be starting that this year. Um, looking at housing, that's another one of our disciplines. It was very obvious early on that we have a housing crisis really all over the United States, but specifically here with our rental costs and how are we going to rectify that for our working class community? Uh, I think when I first started, we had 300 job opportunities here locally and most of the businesses were telling us they just could not find people because they were, they didn't have access to to housing. And so we have a lot of exciting projects and housing that you'll hear more about, but specifically the Payne Lane housing units that I think everybody is relatively familiar with. Um, a, a local gentleman coming back and possibly breaking ground on some market rate apartments over on Payne Lane in Oregon and the, uh, what we commonly refer to as the Old Stidham location. Uh, then water security is a big issue really for everybody in the western states, but obviously we're very concerned about it. We're very, we feel very secure with our water rights. We use about half of the water righted to us, but we also know in the future, the level of insecurity when it comes to water. And so we're looking at projects by, uh, that include adding an emergency filter to the Green Horn reservoir. So it'd be very similar, but a very small version of what we have out in Montague so that we could turn on that water at any point. Those are the old water rights that used to service the city before we went out to Fall Creek. And so we're looking at a project, uh, we got a one and a half million dollar planning grant to design that project, but the ultimate goal is to be able to really make water out of that reservoir when needed to the community because currently if things fell apart for us at Fall Creek, we would be on our emergency well backup system and that would be a boil water notice for the community and we'd really prefer to avoid that. And then finally, the fourth discipline is hazard mitigation. And this is pretty obvious that, you know, we definitely have some flood issues right on Wairika Creek. We're in the FEMA floodplain. But our biggest concern obviously for us after experiencing the McKinney fire is fire mitigation. And so we were lucky enough to get a resiliency officer for five years funded from the Office of Emergency Services with the state of California. We received a million dollar grant. And so we have that resiliency officer. Sarah Chaffee has joined us and she is currently working through going after more grant dollars that we would inevitably be able to do a lot of mitigation efforts. We would do limbing and mastication projects all over the community and uh, home hardening projects is the ultimate goal there. And then just before we have uh, the finance director come off and come up and start off this presentation, I just wanted to go up looking at projects in queue or projects in concept. And so we have uh, within STIP for streets funding, we have a program to NAP Street project. STIP is what paid for our Southern Oregon street project, that million dollar project. And so we'd like to do a very similar project all the way up NAP Street. And so we're hopeful that in the next coming years that that will get funded through STIP. Um, we've looked at kind of some of the items that we already have, uh, that we consider our infrastructure. So we have a skate park. We have a city hall and we have a tennis court that all needs some level of rehab. Obviously, we don't have any heat here this evening and we have the issue with the bathroom use. And we have the tennis courts that, uh, you know, definitely have cracking that have occurred over time. And so just trying to be more proactive to actually take care and maintain the infrastructure that we already own. We also ended up getting that Little Red Schoolhouse on the entryway into Green Horn that we're looking at possibly remodeling as time permits with our own general fund and our public works staff. And then some of the other projects in queue. Design standard ordinance is something that you can anticipate coming to you guys from community development in 2025. Um, we're also looking at, well, we were looking at the EV conversion for carb. This is something that ultimately really fell off the wayside that the state really dropped this in the last week. And so we're pretty excited that we're not gonna have to at the moment go and look for a compliance planning document in order to meet the needs that the state was putting in front of us. Uh, this would be for electrifying fleet essentially or, or having to electrify some, some of the heavier equipment, um, like a street sweeper. Right now, that law or that guidance seems to be pushed aside with the new administration at the White House. Uh, and then obviously we have bargaining that we're going through, uh, again, um, this year with our three unions. And so we can expect to be bringing contracts forward at some point in a public meeting, uh, to be voted on. But without further ado, I'm gonna kick this over to our finance director Emily and each department head is gonna come up and share some of the projects. These are only some of the projects that we're currently working on or have completed in 2024. So Emily, take it away.
Good evening, council. And so much public. I'm Emily Aldrich, the finance director for the city of Wairika. Uh, but gonna show you a couple of projects that we're working on in finance. Uh, as you may or may not know, finance handles all of the accounts payable, utility billing, payroll for the entire city as well as business licenses and the community center and theater rentals and dog licensing. So here's some of the stuff we're working on that is outside of our day-to-day operations. Next slide, please. Uh, as most of you are aware, we have passed a 1% sales tax initiative to fund our fire hall and fire department. Currently, our sales tax rate is 7.75%. This will raise, uh, which the state minimum is 7.25. So as you know, we don't get the whole 7.75. Uh, this will raise the sales tax in the city limits to 8.75. Uh, it's estimated to generate anywhere from 2.4 to 2.8 million that will fund those initiatives. Uh, this will not be effective until April 1st, 2025. So the city can actually not expect to see those funds rolling in until approximately around July. There's usually about a two-month delay period in collection versus receiving. Next slide. Uh, as many of you may or may not know, the city as well as almost every governmental entity in the state of California has a unfunded liability. Uh, so it is our debt that we owe in the future to our retirees to pay for their pensions. Uh, every year we get a new estimate of what that is and they calculate it based off of demographics, age, life expectancy of our current retirees and our prospective retirees. We have decided to engage Cameron Weest, who we have engaged previously. Uh, he helped us secure funding for the Highway 3 project, uh, for most recent project that he's helped us with. Uh, he is going to be analyzing our budget, budget and financial position as well as auditing both the Classic and Peppera members to strategize the best plan to attack this unfunded liability. As my predecessor would say, you don't eat an elephant all at once. You eat it one bite at a time. So this is our game plan to start making that happen. Next slide. We have also engaged Cameron Weest and Cal Muni to incorporate all of these financial policies into one long-term financial plan for the general fund as a whole. As you guys are aware, we do a financial plan for our water and sewer, our enterprise funds uh, every five years to try and mitigate costs that we may or may not see, uh, to make sure that we are still lucrative and operational. We are going to put together a financial plan that will address those same goals for our general fund. Next slide. Uh, some of you may or may not know, I am also in charge of IT. Which uh, sounds like not a very big feat, but most days it is a very big feat. So we actually have engaged a program called Mas360 in which 80% of all of our tablets and cell phones are currently on. Uh, it gives me remote access to locate the phone, shut down the phone in the case of it got lost or it was stolen. Uh, it gives us a better handle on our IT and uh, keeping it safe. One of our bigger upcoming projects is going to be unbundling our dark fiber from a current service provider. We have been somewhat technology forward, uh, in the very early years, which means we've partnered with, uh, other entities for our secure data. And we're now seeing the need to unbundle that so that we have more control over that information and data. We did two server upgrades were completed both for this, uh, this building and office as well as PD. And we successfully updated the required domain change name, name change, sorry. Uh, so our website is now wairikaca.gov, uh, because the state mandated us to go to a .gov. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think, uh, Matt Bray, the director of Public Works is up next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Matthew Bray, your director of public works. I'm excited tonight to share a little bit as city manager Ledbetter mentioned, this isn't all of it. But these are our heavy hitters for the last year. Start off, slide please. With the South Oregon street paving, um, we mentioned a little bit ago. That was a $1 million state transportation improvement project funded project. On, kind of on the light end when it comes to paving jobs. Excuse me, because we didn't do a lot of underground infrastructure work. It wasn't needed on that, that one section. So that saved us some time and even with the weather, our contractors were able to get in there and out in a fairly timely manner. In-house to save money, we will be headed back out in the springtime to re-stripe the bike lanes, put in probably a few no parking lanes and such across that and get all that center line stripe added to with the side bike lanes. Next slide. Community theater HVAC and roof project. We're nearing completion on this. We had a meeting this morning with our contractors. There was a one particular control part that was sent on early on the project. It's not the correct part. So we are working, uh, actually this week to get that done. I, I'm not at a point yet where I'm comfortable giving a date that it will be reopened. The, the theater, um, but the project has taken many years to get to this point and we are very excited to get it. This, it's a, it's a massive upgrade. If you have the time, take a drive back behind the theater. It's a massive 40-ton unit, but this was all made possible through a grant from the Red Scarf, Parks Grant and some general fund funding. And then we gap funded it with reserves to get up to the $800,000 price tag to keep that building warm and cool with, uh, with a full house. It's not just a simple throw a heater on the wall type of project there. And so yeah, the 40-ton unit, we placed that and we've been working on that one. Like I say, we should be done any day, but I'm not at liberty to say the day yet. Next slide, please. The East Lennox filter improvements, I've spoken to from the podium before. This was a year or two ago when we, we finally buttoned up the last of that project out at the filter plant on Edgar Road, three mile, three mile lane. But this was 5.2 million to upgrade from Highway 3 to Foothill on Lennox. We did all brand new water main through there and then borderline underneath all lanes of I-5 to get up to East Lennox and then run it up the hill. And then six of the 10 water treatment plant filters. Those are operated with a, a media inside. If you didn't know, it's, it's similar to sand anthracite filter media. And we did all the under, the plumbing underneath those for draining and repainted with a special two, three-part epoxy coating type stuff that we use in the, the water industry. And uh, so that got us back up and, and we're fully operational. Water manager Hathaway cranked that thing up after a separate project and we ran it full tilt to make sure we have all of our graphs and everything dialed down. We know we can pump it at 100%. So that picture there shown was the boring project on Lennox. Next slide, please. This one, we're just finally putting the lipstick on. This was we, in-house, we called it the Burgess Street Sewer Project. It extended, as you can see in this map, where the kind of top right corner is Burgess Street. All those green areas is where our contractors and our staff worked over the last two years to get this done. It's just a massive project. I know we were in everybody's way for quite a long time, very disruptive to the neighborhood, um, that we were working in. But the numbers there are pretty amazing. We did 12,000 feet of six to 18-inch main lines of sewer, 5,100 feet of laterals. So that's the line from the sewer in the street up to your house. So 5,100 feet of those. 35 manholes, 17 rod holes. And then we threw in, uh, 950 feet of six and eight-inch water mains while we were there. A lot of the times when we have the street shut down and the funding available with, it's easier for us to, to take that project and, and do some water lines with the sewer lines that we're doing. And same when we're doing water projects, we like to get some sewer lines in there. So the trench patching was finishing up. The weather hit us there right before Christmas and blew a lot of it out and uh, we apologize for that, but we are gonna button the rest of that, that thing up in spring. Between now and spring as we catch the weather. So yeah, it was all throughout the city. We had Burgess Street, NAP Street, Oak Street, Yama Street, Minor Street, the alleys. We were, we were everywhere. And so it's a one of the final pieces to one of my first projects here. Where we're buttoning up that northern end of town and really shoring it up for the next 50 to 100 years. Next slide, please. South Wairika Water System Grant. Um, this is what Jason spoke to a little bit ago. One and a half billion dollar state funded for the design and engineering to put Green Horn back online is how we're saying it in-house. That, that is an old water right. It, it does predate the, the Fall Creek line as Jason spoke to. Um, we have another water right further up the creek that predates this water right. So the story of Wairika has always been chasing water. That's what we do. And, and I know Jason and I have, we, we think of the same mind with it. We can never have enough water for our citizens in Wairika. So we're constantly chasing water. I, I have other projects here that I won't speak to that are all about chasing water and locking down some water rights. Um, so that this will result when we get through this planning grant and get out to the construction funding side. As of now, the engineering estimates laying around $15 million and uh, three different sections at 15 million. So depending on how the state funding comes out of the different pots that we pull from when it's available. We're looking long-term storage and protection of our water security with that project. Next slide, please. The Flood Hazard Reduction Project, we in-house call it the FHR. You've heard it called the Greenway. Those are two different projects. FHR is the physical laying open of the creek bed to take that hundred-year FEMA floodplain and put it within the high banks through town. The Greenway is another project on top of that that creates the trails and the bridges and such. Right now, the city is focused on the flood hazard reduction portion of that. That's where we have the funding available. And we're putting this next phase out to bid here this winter. We're tidying up the final bits of it now. And hopefully if the bids come in and the way we hope, we will be out there in the springtime. Predominantly, this phase of the FHR project creates overflow channels for that hundred-year event that you see in the blue maps, if you're familiar with FEMA mapping. And it takes the power and diverts it out of the main channel of Wyreka Creek and throws it off to the side. So if you're familiar with this parcel, I five or the purple lines down below, we're up by the Highway Three on the north end of town. And so it's basically from the Caltrans fence all the way over to, to the creek, to the water side. But the majority of work is taking place just off of the water's edge, which gets us out of a lot of permitting. We don't need to do full-blown permitting. There's, there is a section at the north end where this overflow will tie back into the creek bed proper as it's found its way over the decades, which is by no means a natural creek bed. So we help, we hope to emulate with this project and for future projects, the, the habitat for all of the wildlife that utilizes the creek. And I just reiterate, reiterate once more. We're really focused on the hundred-year floodplain because as soon as we can get more funding and more stretches of this flood hazard reduction project done, there would not be a need for your insurance to sell you flood insurance. So that is the, the ultimate goal of FHR, which I think has probably been lost to time. And I just wanted to reiterate that one more time that the plan is to remove the need for flood insurance in the entire city. Next slide. Water Supply and Storage Improvements. This is a massive project, long time coming. The Davis Well is on Davis Road, which is commonly known as the new police department. Just inside that, that big fence that we built there when we remodeled that building into the PD. It sits on top of a massive aquifer. We've pump tested it over the years. We have a good idea of how big that aquifer is and how much security it can add to the city's water supplies. And so we will be redrilling and building out another system there, which is different than most of our systems with water. Fall Creek is surface water. We treat it as surface water. You know, so this will be a well water. So it's a slightly different operation on how we bring it up and chlorinate it and that kind of thing, but simpler. And then additional storage tanks. So we were graciously given some property on the south end of town by the late Myron Anderson and his wife Judy. And we're working with, with Mrs. Anderson now through those agreements to take another look and make sure that the family understands this is the city need. And this was the intent of the original agreement. There'll be a tank on that property above Laura Lane, if you're not familiar. And then the lower humbug tank, if you head up on the north end of town, headed towards four, four corners. It's the first tank you pass. Doing a land swap that we're working right now with the owner up there. And so a partial swap, partial purchase to drop in an upsized new tank to replace the lower humbug tank. That's the storage improvements side of this. And again, this is a state revolving fund at seven million. And again, it's water security for our citizens looking, you know, fifty, eighty, a hundred years down the road. Next slide, please. Thought you didn't put all of them in here, Jason. Waste Water Treatment Plant Upgrade. This is a monster. It's going to be phased. We're talking forty-five million dollars over a period of time. This plant was built back in the seventies. It has not been upgraded in the manner that we are looking at upgrading it. Of course, we maintain it. We rebuild the pumps, that kind of thing. It initially, this project came to us as we were having breakers popping every day. We were having underground direct berry lines burning. We were onesy twosy fixing, fixing it. And when we dug in on the engineering side of it, we realized it's probably time to fix all of it. And to set that up for future growth. So this phase doesn't, it inherently will allow us to take more effluent in from the, the mains in the street. But just because that's how efficient the new processes are compared to this original process. Main thing, we use chlorine right now for disinfection. We're switching to ultraviolet light. Things of that nature that the tech didn't exist back when they built that. Now it's here. Now it's affordable. We're weighing all of those options out as we run through the phases on this project. It's all new computer controls. So right now on a rainy, rainy day, my guys have to run down there after, on the weekends or after work in the middle of a rainstorm, snowstorm, all of it, and manually check levels. There's a lot of button pushing and valve turning and, and dark nights out there running around, keeping that thing running. This will completely automate it like our water system is. We can operate our water system valves at Fall Creek on a cell phone from anywhere in the world. It's called SCADA. So this will be completely SCADA controlled. All-new underground electrical that I said was blowing up and it connects the subsurface disposal field with the computer also. So north of the wastewater treatment plant here, there's a forty-two acre parcel down there that's just a big gigantic septic tank, septic system of pipe. And so we don't have any computer oversight on that right now. So this adds that in there, which is massive to us. I spoke to the chlorine to UV disinfection, replacing the tertiary filters, the, at the end, the end filters. And upgrading some lift stations that we have on the other side of Butcher Hill that pump all the sewer out from the mill up Philippi and up over the hill. We call that a force main. It's a series of four pumps. Those pumps are about sixteen years old now. So those need to be tied into the SCADA as the system and brought back up to speed. And then a duplication of our centrifuge building right now, which the centrifuge building doesn't really show well in this picture. But we used to take the sludge that was left over from wastewater treatment plant and haul it over with a special tractor because you didn't want to use it for anything else and put it over the drying beds and air dry it. Well, now we screw press that into a centrifuge building. And it's a big tank that looks like a concrete truck and it spins and, and all the water comes out of it. And then the dry waste is hauled away. We have one of those. So if it goes down, this whole plant is ineffective. And we'd have to go back to the old way of throwing out in the drying beds, which if you recall, the north end of town didn't smell so great in the eighties. So this project is also duplicating that cement mixer, high-speed D-water centrifuge. And as, as I mentioned, it's, it's going to be in phases because it's just too big to swallow all at once. There's all the engineering now. We'll build out the plan. The plan will be altered slightly as we get going. And then Jason spoke to the water permit and water planning. That's what we do. It's what I really focused on with Jason on the daily. I don't know if you wanted to speak to this, Jason, but it is, it's, it's source and capacity planning. We're looking at wells. We're looking at putting in more tanks. We're always chasing another water right if we see that one's available. The emergency water opportunities. We're looking in beyond the city limits and out towards the sphere of influence because the state water boards has asked us to. They're, they're saying to us and to all municipalities that have their own water rights, take a look on your borders. Is there anything that we could do to help the community as a whole, not just those that live in the city limits? Which turns into a whole nother annexation and/or discussion. But just so you understand it, that sphere of influence connections is not quite there, but it is getting close to being mandated by the state that I anticipate that during, during my career, they will come to me and say, you must. I think that's California's way. And then you've got the, the water permits that we submitted with the state with our water attorney, Gwen Mortoli. Typically that's a five or a ten-year permit. And they allowed us a twenty-year submission. So when we write these permits and we get the permissions to draw the CFS that we need, that we think we need, that we've proved, we've proven we need for future growth, they typically just give you ten years and say, we'll, we'll call you in nine years and you can rewrite that plan. So we got twenty on this. I think the final slide for me is the pallet shelter. I've been assisting Madeline Bryan over in Behavioral Health on the county side with the erection of the pallet shelter over on South Foothill. And it's, it's near and dear to council's heart. I understand. We've talked about this for at least half the time I've been your director. But this gets fifteen to eighteen pallet homes up. There's a building in the middle that sits on a slab that behavioral health folks and/or their contractors can sit in and assist the folks with getting their IDs, that kind of thing. So it's a whole program side. I, like I say, I've just been here to assist them with how to navigate a public works project because behavioral health doesn't typically do that. So yeah, the NBCSS, they signed on as the contractor for that one. And so there, we have local contractors that went into contract with the county. They're pouring the concrete, doing the dirt work, the electrical work, every, the plumbing, everything that needs to happen and barring any unforeseen circumstances, other than the one I got yesterday. We have a flatbed truck rolling into Wyreka, I believe on February fourteenth. It's loaded with all of the shelters, the prefab bathroom, the shower stalls. It should be here mid-February. And we should be ready to take them off the truck and start installing them. So that, that's a, that's a big win for the community and I was just pleased to be able to assist our, the staff over at the county to get that one off the ground.
Thank you so much, Matt. That was incredible.
Thank you, Matt.
Next we have the Assistant City Manager and also the person that directs community development, Juliana Licasi.
Hello. So community development, we're going to be focusing on four different areas today within community development. We tend to be a catch-all department for all of our other departments coordinating with them. But I'll talk about the four main ones today, which our first one is planning. And so we've been focusing on implementation of your housing element, which you approved in twenty twenty-three, as well as moving over into a newer area that we have prioritized, which is redevelopment, which focuses on both commercial and residential. Next slide, please. And so for the housing projects, as Jason has mentioned, the main one we are working on, the, which is a private development is the pain lane market rate housing complex. It's approximately two hundred and ninety-five units, multiple phases. This has a number of environmental cleanup aspects to it. And so our planning manager, who will be presenting an item later, not related to this project, has been working on the Brownfields Grant Administration, as well as coordinating all of the contractors onsite to do the Phase Two cleanup of that property. So the City of Wyreka with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council went in and got a community-wide Brownfields Assessment Grant a number of years ago. And this is the tail end of that grant funding that we have available for these types of properties. We have applied for another one and hopefully we'll hear back in either summer or fall. If we are awarded again, the grant is a really important step for a lot of redevelopment within the city. It is basically allowing private property owners, not just the city, since this is not a city-held property. But it allows all private property owners to be able to assess their properties and get it ready for redevelopment if it's had an industrial or any type of potentially toxic use. The good thing about California is they consider asbestos and lead toxic under that grant, which means that we can pretty much do any property within the city, just due to the age of our buildings, building stock, excuse me. Another project that we're working on is if you'll remember, the city council approved working with two housing developers. We have RC HDC, who is the property owner and manager of the Crossroads Project and Dan Co, who is a newer housing developer. So we partner with them to look for projects and encourage them to do development within the city to meet your projected housing goals within your housing element. And so Dan Co is working with our office on a proposal for low-income and transitional housing, which there will be an item later on your agenda to discuss the grant application related to the Home Key Grant that we've been focusing on for the last two years. And finally, there is an exploration of a Phase Two for the Crossroads Project to expand the number of units on their property up there to potentially look at seventy-five more housing units. And so we're just keeping on track with that. Additionally, as you'll remember, we also sent out interest letters to private property owners that were identified as having properties that would qualify for low-income housing, workforce housing, senior assisted living and senior assisted living housing types. And so we'll continue to work with those private property owners as opportunities come in front of us. Unfortunately, with the LA fires, a number of the housing grants have been rolled back in anticipation of assisting the LA area with regrowth and rebuilding. And one of the, the things that we're taking a look at is which of those grants are being rolled back and which will continue to be offered to us because it does not make sense for us to waste our time on grants that are not going to be focused on our area. But the Home Key Grant is still set aside for these types of programs in our area. Next slide, please. One of the other things that we have discussed over the last year is refining our special events process. And one of the things we've noticed that needs to be clarified is a, a special event ordinance is our recommendation. So we are putting together a draft ordinance for consideration, researching different cities that do a more ministerial or streamlined process. As it sits right now, we do encroachment agreements and temporary use permits, which is a little bit of a clunky process, as well as being a little bit expensive for some of our event organizers. So we're in the research and development portion of that right now. We have sent out a survey to all of our event organizers to get their feedback on things that went well, that didn't go well, that we can improve throughout the processes. With again, the objective of keeping it streamlined, clear and concise, and ensuring effective use of city public spaces. One of the things that we do get a lot of requests for is shutting down streets, but we don't get as many requests for utilizing city park properties. So we're looking into how to encourage more events to use those spaces as well. Next slide, please. So next we'll talk about building. So we are looking primarily at creating a more efficient system within our building department with streamlining our permits as well as digitization. Next slide, please. So first off, we do have an accessory dwelling unit webpage on our website now. It is live. It has a number of helpful links for people who are interested in doing accessory dwelling units on their property, as well as looking at funding opportunities. And then we have also worked with Siskiyou County to take their pre-approved plan set and move them through our process as well. And so we do have a number of pre-approved plan sets available for individuals who would like to utilize those. The objective of that is to lower the overall cost of putting those plan sets together. They could also be used as single-family residences. There are a couple of differences in the regulations between ADUs and single-family residences, residences such as solar and fire sprinkler requirements. So we do ask that people still do a pre-application meeting with us to make sure everybody knows the difference between those regulation pieces. Next slide, please. In addition to that, we've purchased, if you've gone through my office, we've purchased a brand new Desk Commander, which sounds really impressive, but it's just a giant touchscreen TV. And that was a good sign. So one of the things we're doing is we now have a thirty-six by forty-five touchscreen plan set computer, which we're able to pull up large-scale plans on and we are able to annotate by hand on that. That's just in an effort to start accepting digital plan sets. One, it'll become more efficient for record keeping. If you're a homeowner or business owner or building owner in the city, it can be pretty cumbersome to come into City Hall and wonder where your plans are for a building you built in nineteen, in the nineteen eighties. And then we have to go to our offsite storage and find those plan sets. So eventually we will be moving to a digitization of our current plan sets and property files so that those can all become available online, just to help with, you know, information so people can grab those from there and not have to talk to anybody. You know, that's a big thing. If you type in like twenty and hit enter, it'll go to that slide right away. Okay. No, you're good. So basically it's just coming into making it more efficient. When things become more efficient, we end up saving a lot of time and energy. And so we can lower the cost of doing some of our services if we become more efficient at doing them. So this lovely giant green exclamation point is signifying we've moved into the hazard mitigation portion of community development. And as Jason said, we do have a new resiliency planner. Sarah Chaffee, who's not here tonight, but she's available. She's wonderful. She's been primarily working on all of our different hazard mitigation initiatives, which includes wildfire mitigation, flood hazard reduction, as well as a number of other emergency preparedness items. So this first one is our air curtain burner. For those who are not familiar with it, we got this through a CAL FIRE grant, which is from the Cap and Trade Grant System. And so this was to purchase that lovely green dumpster of a unit. It has a blower. And basically what it does is it creates a kind of circular formation of air to keep smoke down and to reduce particle matter into the air so that we can pretty much burn all day, every day for a number of days and process vegetation waste. The idea is that we will have an ongoing program for residents and businesses to be able to either drop off or eventually we will come and pick up green waste. That is a number of years out, but the idea- Or eventually, we will come and pick up green waste. That is a number of years out, but the idea is to start building that programming now. We do happen to have a number of green waste days coming up here that we haven't announced yet. And I did, I did forget to put in how many tons of green waste we've processed so far, but it's quite a bit since October, which is really great. So we're just refining that program and we will have it in perpetuity at some point. But right now, it just keep an eye out for some of the days that we'll be accepting green waste. And again, we do accept green waste from everyone in the county. We do not hold it just for Wairika residents. We do ask that people let us know where they're coming from, so that we can keep that data and communicate that to CAL FIRE. A number of other cities and community services districts have looked at the air burner that we have and looked at a number of other units. Because they would also like to get one. So we do like to record the data, just so that we can let that jurisdiction know, like, we have processed X number of tons of your waste. So this is kind of helping you get one of them for your community. So we do accept everybody's when we do those green waste days. Next slide, please. Flood hazard reduction, as Matt brought up, he does the kind of construction side of flaying it open. Another aspect of our flood hazard reduction programming is that part of that funding can go to acquire more land for future floodplain property. Work. And so we are reviewing the grant-eligible projects that we'll have. And then we want to see how much money is left after the East Lennox Project, to be able to take a look at some other key properties to purchase along Wairika Creek. To put forward for flood hazard reduction projects in the future. Next slide, please. Staff training and capacity, this is one you guys don't get to see very often, but Sarah has been working with John Elsneb in our HR Department. To look at our disaster response training for city employees. For those of you who do not know, all city employees within the state of California are required to become emergency services workers under local declarations of emergency. And so we are now informing our employees that they are required to do that if we need them. And then we are also training them now. So they're going through a number of training exercises at the moment. And then we will be doing a full-day training for all of city staff, probably on a Friday, when we're typically closed at the front. To be able to run through an actual disaster response scenario. And so that's just to, again, really solidify the skillset in our employees, to be able to respond to things like the LA fires. One of the things that we don't think about is post-disaster recovery. You know, we need our utility biller to go through and look at all the accounts who got hit, who hasn't, shut those meters off to make sure we're not pulling any crud into the system. If we do have crud in the system, then going through and doing notifications for that. So there's a lot of positions within the city that have really key roles in a day-to-day life that we don't think about. That get escalated in an emergency situation when we're in post-disaster recovery. Next slide, please. Finally, the fourth piece that we'll talk about tonight is code enforcement. That has moved from the Wairika Police Department over to Community Development. So we have been running that program now. Next slide, please. A lot of this is working on unsafe properties. We had kind of a laundry list of complaints that we were working on previously. And so bringing several of those properties back to the forefront and working on each one of those, primarily focused on vegetation management, condemned buildings. And buildings with a very high fire risk. And so we are slowly working our way down that list without bankrupting the city, because if you don't know, code enforcement is extremely expensive. And it can take a very long time for those code enforcement cases to pay the city back. We have gotten money back, which is great. But it's, we do need to be very cognizant of that as we work through all of these processes available to us. And so priority areas are for properties that can be salvaged and brought back into compliance. That's not always the case, but that is our ultimate goal. So it's not to be punitive, it's not to get rid of people's, you know, structures. It's really to make sure that they are safe and that they can be salvaged. And if the City Council can remember, as part of our housing element, we did develop a strategy for reviewing the condition of housing structures within the city. We did complete that last year. And then this two thousand and twenty-five calendar year within the housing element, we have prioritized working on programs to target those areas of town. Where we have a number of dilapidated housing units or about to be dilapidated, to work on programming, to reach out to those individuals, to fix up their housing. Before it becomes condemned. It is much cheaper to keep people in their houses than to deal with them once they become unhoused. And so our efforts in housing really stem into code enforcement and making sure we clean up a lot of those houses and keep people in their homes. And a lot of our data, it really suggests that the neighborhoods that are having the most problem upkeeping their homes are also those lived in by people. Who are over the age of sixty-five and who are veteran status. And so again, people need help with working on those, those facilities. And so that'll be our next priority. Next slide, please. And then finally signage, we did an inventory of signs a number of years ago. And so we are going to be going through the community for businesses no longer in business, sign frames and structures that no longer have signs in them. We'll be putting priority on Highway Three and heavily trafficked areas first, and then moving through there. We'll be working with the property owners on options to either bring the signs back into compliance or to demo the delinquent signs. One of the reason for this is you have a brand-new Highway Three. And so we're now starting to look at redevelopment of those properties along Highway Three and starting to knock off some of the pieces that detract. From the high quality of that, that project. And so this will be our next endeavor this year, is going through those signs. Next slide, please. So finally, one of the big things that we've been dealing with in Community Development is we have three new employees in planning, hazard mitigation and code enforcement. That has taken a lot of time. If I've learned anything, it's that I don't get to plan nearly as often as I would like. And people become more of my work product. So it's been a fun year, training everybody and getting to focus on that and building the team's capacity to do a good job. So these are some older areas as well as newer areas within the city. And then refining policies and procedures to decrease overall costs for the city, as well as applicants for our permits. As I said before, we, you know, really are prioritizing that efficiency piece, because as we get better at our job, it doesn't take us nearly as much time. Which costs money to do those things. And that ends up being a win for the city and our applicants for private development. And then we're also identifying ways to make processes easier for applicants to understand and comply with those processes. So we're always looking for constructive criticism. We've instituted the pre-application meetings and have been holding to that for the last year. And find it extremely helpful for applicants to be able to ask questions before they submit an application. And we do our best to answer all of those questions. Sometimes we can't. But we're hoping that it makes it a little bit more realistic for those who want to start a project within the city. Next slide, please. And finally, I am still working on the general plan and zoning code updates, projected land use element scheduled for March of two thousand and twenty-five. It's really important that we get that item before you for comments, before it goes to several of our other contractors. Who are using the densities and information in the land use element, which is one of the most essential pieces. So noise, redevelopment, circulation, all of those really hinge on your final decisions for that element. So I'm hoping to bring a draft to you and the public in March with that goal to just get you guys to approve a draft. It doesn't have to happen at that meeting, but I want to introduce it, so we can start getting some information to the other pieces to work on. And then, as I said before, circulation, the other elements will follow based off of that land use element. And then we will have the environmental review conclude in two thousand and twenty-five. And that environmental review will be both the general plan update and the zoning code update. And there will still be several opportunities for members of the public to contribute within those processes. So it's not going to just come in front of City Council. The zoning update has a number of other public engagement pieces that we will put out. For general public comment on those as part of that process. And I believe that is my last slide and it is fire.
Thank you, Juliana. That was wonderful. Next, we'll have Fire Chief Lemus.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the public. Jerry Lemus, your Wairika City Fire Chief. So as many of, as all of you should know, probably most of you do know, we did propose a sales tax increase last November. And that was successful. So I thank the city, I thank the public and all the staff for support of this, because it's in my mind, long overdue. I've been doing this for thirty years, most of it volunteer, and then the last few years as your fully-paid fire chief. So the gist of the matter is, or the, the heart of the matter is, for doing this, for proposing these, these items for paid staff. And a new fire station came from the fact that, as you see by the numbers, with the volunteer staff, running two thousand calls a year. It's pretty hard to sustain that. In fact, it's, it's created a lot of problems for people to try to do that. So we've maintained, we've been able to do it. We, we get a dispatch, we go. So as you can see, from two thousand and twenty-four, fourteen structure fires. And keep in mind, those are some in Wairika, and some of those are mutual aid or automatic aid with our neighbors in Montague, South Wairika. And also to the north in Hawkinsville, which is a state responsibility area through CAL FIRE. Twenty-eight vegetation fires of different, different types, five flu or chimney fires. Those have actually gone down over the years. When I got in the department in nineteen ninety-four, there was, there were a lot of them, even and going back before that. But then the monitor heater kind of changed that. Not everybody was burning wood after that. So that's, that's, those have actually gone down. Fifteen hundred and thirty medical responses, that's the increase that, that I've seen in my time. And that's what is, you know, at times has broken some of our volunteers and they decided to give it up. So with the possibility of not having a response, this is why we had to go this route, because that was, it was coming to that. We've increased our membership, so that is much better now. We have a lot of young folks coming in. And I'm glad to see that, because it's, you know, we, we had some of the, one of the oldest departments in the, in the county, I think. Twelve gas leaks, twelve power lines down, and a hundred and seven public assists. The public assist, to me, seems a little light, but I understand that those, all those numbers added up don't equal over two thousand. So there's quite a few other categories that those would fall into, but just know that that was all done by, you know, volunteers. And that's pretty amazing. That's been going on for, ever since the department was founded. So, next slide. So the goal is that we will add paid staff at some point here, once we get through all the job descriptions and get everything, all our ducks in a row. Create a forty-eight ninety-six work schedule. So that will be a benefit for the firefighter. So there'll be twenty-four-seven coverage. There'll always be somebody at the station. And they'll be able to respond, you know, and increase our response times, which in turn helps our ISO rating for insurance. So they're all positives going forward. And it helps keep people, gives them, you know, plenty of, plenty of time on the job, make it a decent wage. And also it doesn't burn them out. They can spend their time with their family and, and it helps the volunteers. They don't necessarily have to get up at night to go. You know, on a public assist, the, the paid staff can handle that. And so you see there it limits volunteer fatigue. So that's, that's going to be a huge, this whole project is just a huge benefit to the city and to the firefighters. That, you know, have given their, over the years, given their time and, and energy. Next slide. So the other portion, our station now is approaching a hundred years old. Was built in the late twenties, early thirties, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. It was added on to in the sixties for an additional three engine bays. But if you guys remember here, just a few weeks ago, there was a little bit of an earthquake. I was upstairs and I was worried. I thought, oh, if there was an aftershock, it could be bad. And then the, the worry is that we have gas lines underground and we could have enough damage to where we can't open the doors. Because it's not seismically protected. So I was a little nervous until I realized we're good. But so going forward with the new station, well, it'll be designed to current standards. It's an essential services building. So it will have all the things that are required these days with building construction. As I said, seismic protection, you name it. But we need more room. We've outgrown where we're at. The apparatus are now larger. In length, width, height, everything. For those of you that have been by our station now and see our ladder truck, it barely fits in there. And then we had to modify it when we got that ladder truck, so that it would fit. So things are way overdue, but you know what? We're going to get there with the help of the city. So Community Development Block Grant, Planning Grant, rather, of two hundred and fifty thousand. Went for siding and starting engineering, which we've, we're well into that. And Jason and myself have gone out and done these presentations to different service groups, which, you know, the, the community was, was well-informed, I think. I hope everybody here was well-aware of what was going on. If not, then we apologize. But it was, it was a great effort. And that's why we are today talking about something that's going to come to fruition. So we have a gap for engineering completion, but we're gonna, I know we're gonna bridge that gap just, just fine. We have a good group of people working on this. And I have to say that NMR, the architect from Redding, that did these drawings, these conceptual drawings, if you will. They looked like a photo, quite honestly, and they really knocked it out of the park. I was extremely happy with their design. Because it's like, you want something that is, they're expensive no matter what you build. But we wanted something that was, you know, going to be a shining example of our, our fire department. And I think we're gonna, I believe we're gonna get that. So, next slide. That's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next up, we'll have the HR Director, Mr. John Elsneb.
Good evening, council members and members of the community. My name is John Elsneb. I'm the HR Director. As far as projects and initiatives for two thousand and twenty-four. Participated in all sworn police officer interviews at the Police Department. This helps foster teamwork between the HR Department and YPD. Developed a workplace violence prevention plan and provided training to all city employees. That's a requirement of SB five-five-three, which we completed. For professional growth, completed the Public Sector Relations Certificate, which was, has been very helpful. Onboarded nine volunteer firefighters in the last year for YF, Y Rika Fire Department. Which I believe is, has been, that's quite a few. I think that's a significant increase from prior years. Ensured the city maintained ninety-five percent completion percentage for anti-harassment training and ethics. Which is always a good, it's important to keep city employees trained. It's also an important metric for our risk pool and insurance. Next slide, please. One that I'm pretty proud of is we had zero industrial injuries that resulted in lost time incidents for all employees with the City of Wairika. That's a good measurement of safety, although we did have a few incidents. None were, none of them were significant enough where people lost time or came to work with restrictions. No labor grievances for two thousand and twenty-four, another important metric. Successful recruits, successfully recruited and filled vacancies for the Resiliency Planner, Assistant City Manager, Code Enforcement Officer. Four maintenance worker positions, three police officer positions, and an administrative technician to meet the staffing needs of the city. It was a busy recruitment year between volunteers and full-time and part-time physicians. Developed numerous job classifications for our upcoming fire department. Received safety grants for three AEDs, approved but approval to update our confined space procedures, improve employee safety. We have that in the works. Transitioned from Civic HR to Criterion, which is our HR soft recruitment software. Collaborated with unions and associations to implement a catastrophic leave policy for all city employees. In case they have a catastrophic event, they can continue to receive certain benefits that are really important while they're on leave. Initiated a compensation study. We have that in the works and near completion for all city, for a majority of city positions. And then for personal growth, attended PORAC training, eternal affairs, and peace officers' bill of rights. Next slide, please. For two thousand and twenty-five, some of the goals, establish recruitment and onboarding processes for full-time firefighter positions. That include interview panels, pre-employment medical exams, agility tests, and then submitting a benefits resolution to council for approval. That'll be a major project for two thousand and twenty-five. For my own personal growth, it'll be complete the SHRM certificate, which is society, through the Society of Human Resources Management, which is a professional certificate. Complete the comprehensive compensation study, as I mentioned before. Install an electronic bulletin board for, for communication, basically digital signage. I think that'll be, be helpful to send the same message across all city departments. And then revise safety procedures for public works related to confined space lockout, tag-out, fall protection. And we have some help with that through, through SCORE, which helps us with our insurance pool. Next slide, please. For future staffing, looking ahead, over the next five to ten years, there's opportunities for staffing growth. One of those positions could potentially be an HR coordinator. As the city grows with more and more people, there's more of a need for human resources. And a different compliance involving safety. Another option would be to have a Deputy Director of Public Works for stability and succession. And then additional safety staff is needed for the city between police and fire.
Wonderful, John. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Next, we have our Police Chief, Mr. Mark Gilman.
Well, council?
So I'm here to talk about the police department, and we don't have lots of projects, so this should be pretty quick. We mostly just respond to calls. One of our projects was installation of the Sunridge REM system. So we had a system for maintaining our calls and keeping our information throughout Waireca and our case logs. That was very outdated. And anyone who's watched TV knows most people have the computer in the car. Most officers, it's called MDT. So we want the Sunridge system. It lets us communicate with other agencies within the county. So now we can share information. We have MDTs in the car now, so the officers can do a lot of their work when they're in the field. So it keeps them in the field longer. So that's what, a huge thing, and it didn't cost us a lot of money. We use surplus money that we have gotten from other crimes where we had money left over. So it didn't cost the city very much money at all. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So throughout this last year, we purchased a drone and we have a drone program with a couple pilots now, which has been amazing. We've got four new patrol cars, which is actually more than we wanted. It's just the way it worked out because of the COVID supply and how you couldn't get anything. So we're on a lot of waiting lists and all of a sudden they all came to at once. So waited up for four patrol cars. So we've got a full fleet right now. We moved our code enforcement that Julian already talked to over to the city where it's been a little bit more effective. And then we started some specialized training. So we have a new department. When I came in, you know, we had a lot of turnover. So we have a lot of new officers. So we started a program and now we have, you know, hostage negotiators. We have, you know, high-risk medics. We have people for entry teams. We just, we have bilingual speakers now, which we have never had that I've worked in our enforcement. So it's been very good that we're starting to get more out in the public and help more people. We have the HLO program and the School of Resource Officer, and now we have these other features. So it's a huge benefit for the city. Next slide. Our stats are very good. I'm very proud of my department. I, I think the people there are just absolutely amazing that, that I work with. So we have nineteen thousand incidents this year. You look back two years, which is the last time the state announces our crime stats and everything for the city of Waireca. Anyone that's looked it up has seen what Waireca looks like. Twenty twenty-two is the last they did it. We handled almost six thousand more calls for service then. Back then, we had one point six officers per thousand people. Through the city council's help, with my pushing and the city manager's support, we're up now to two officers per thousand, and it's dropped our calls for service by almost six thousand calls a year. Which is absolutely amazing. Thirty, over thirty percent of my officer's time is spent looking for crimes in progress. That, that's an amazing stat. That just blows me away. It makes me feel very proud of my team. Most incident locations are Walmart, YHS, Rain Rock Casino, and Waireca Junction. Law of that is from the homeless. That's where most of my calls come from is the homeless community right now. And we took sixteen hundred reports and we made eight hundred and forty arrests, and you can see the other stats on there. Very impressive for a small town. Next slide. Now, one thing I want to mention on that last slide, too, when I came in, fentanyl was really starting to hit hard, and we were having a lot of fentanyl overdose deaths. So now we treat every fentanyl overdose death as a manslaughter case. We've got one conviction, one more going to court, and we just have a new one right now. So it's, I'm very proud. The state of California has only had a couple of these cases ever go to court. We've already got a conviction. We've got one going for a conviction, and we've got another one started. And our use of fentanyl in Waireca has dropped dramatically because we've been going after people and charging them a manslaughter. They've stopped selling it in Waireca. So we're working with HR for our goals to maintain our staffing. Like, like I mentioned a minute ago, when we have a full staff, crime drops in Waireca. As soon as our staff drops, crime skyrockets because we need cars on the street. People need to see cars. We added, or we want to add a detective's position and a community service officer position. We have a lot of major crimes that we try to do with the street patrol officers, and it just doesn't get the attention it should get. I'd like to see a full-time detective. And we did away with animal control a couple of years ago to give us police officers. We averaged two animal control calls a day in Waireca. So I would like to get a community service officer position. John at HR has been helping me. Two calls a day doesn't really justify a full-time animal control officer, but a community service officer doing animal control cars and helping with parking and towing abandoned vehicles, I think would really benefit the city of Waireca. HR has been amazing. He's already drawn up the plans for it. So I'd like to see that implemented in the next year. And then we're looking to get some new tasers. Ours are all outdated. And body cams and a flock camera purchase, which I'm working on right now. And I'm also looking at grants into them. And then I'd like to look at some kennel services. Our kennels are very outdated, and I want to make sure that the dogs that we house are in good conditions, not something we constantly have to go out and fix the heater, bring them blankets, things like that. I would like to make sure they're better taken care of. And I think that's my last slide.
Thank you, Chief.
We're almost done, folks. This is Jason Ledbetter again, City Manager. Next slide, please, Cindy. So really, there's a lot of crossover. We have a department head meeting once a week, and it's not uncommon for anybody that's a department head to be working in another department, kind of trying to facilitate some of these projects. So ultimately, it's not confined in a box. There's a lot of crossover with everybody from each department, kind of helping out and picking up just so we can see these come to fruition. And so I'm just going to showcase a few more slides. We partnered with Discover Siskiyou to bring back Concert in the Park, and that was a huge success. We're very grateful for Discover Siskiyou partnering with us. But it was just wonderful to see the community out utilizing minor street park again for something to do. I think in these small communities, we need to provide some level of entertainment outlet, and we're, we're doing that, and it was very successful. Next slide. We had a communication ad hoc meeting, ad hoc meetings, about twelve of them that completed last year. And through that process, we decided to update the website and also use a communication strategy with videos. And so you're seeing a lot more videos with some of these projects trying to communicate to the public what exactly everybody's working on to make the community a better place. Because sometimes it can get lost in the shuffle when you come to city council meetings. We're talking about some minutia, and you can lose sight of the bigger, the bigger picture and what everybody is working on. And so we're trying to communicate that to the public better. Utilizing those videos. So take a look at the Facebook page, but we're going to have a video section on the website. Once we redo the website, that starts later this month, and it's probably going to take us the whole year to get that website up and running. Next slide. And then we have the Ringy Pool Abatement and Replacement Project coming. So we did sit down with NMR out of Reading in the Aquatic Design Group, and we are planning sometime in the future to bring that design forward to city council and for public review. And then what we'd like to do is we'd like to polish that design pretty much, get buy-in, make any alterations that the public wants to suggest to the council, and then have the council bless that design. And then from that point, there's no funding for the actual development of, of Ringy or abating it. We would then seek kind of a political play to our local representatives and to the state with the, with the Parks Department to see how we can gain the monies needed in order to rectify our pool situation. So this is pretty exciting. Look for this in the coming couple of months, and we anticipate to have a lot of public feedback on this. Next slide. So that really concludes the state of the city. I just wanted to make a couple of points here is that we have great appetites at the city. The city staff does. This is a real passion project to see this community turned around and bring it back to its glory days. And so ultimately, everybody has a level of buy-in here, and, and I don't think that you would get this type of staff in another city. And quite frankly, having had many jobs in my career, this is by far the best staff that I've ever worked with. And so I think sometimes we lose sight of, of everything that we're doing when we just see maybe the piece of garbage on the ground or maybe a pothole in the street. We lose sight of the bigger picture of everything that's happening. So I really hope that the, the members of the audience today get a better understanding of absolutely everything that we're attempting to do and that we're really at capacity. I'd say we're over capacity, quite frankly. My motto is just more, 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 more. Yes, yes, yes. But ultimately, at this point, I think that we just settle down, hunker down into everything you guys have seen in this presentation, and then just guide the ship forward and start knocking these things out. We hope by July first, we have paid staff for, for fire in place and actually working in our community, six positions. And then we also hope that by the end of summer twenty twenty-five, we have site control on a location that we're negotiating currently for the new fire hall, and we can present that to the community as well. So thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Does any council members have any questions? No questions? All right. Nope, okay. So I hate to do this, but I'm going to do a seven-minute break, if that's okay. So I'm going to adjourn, and we'll come back about, no, we'll say eight-ten because it takes a little long. So we'll take a ten-minute break. Okay, we're resuming from our break at eight-eleven. Okay, I'm, item number six, public comments. Public participation is welcomed and invited to all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for a public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as others not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed in the public hearing or do business sections on the agenda, please address the city when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronic adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing, providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since the council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or be placed on a future agenda. The public comment period is not intended to be question and answer period or conversations with the city council or city staff. Any public comment at this time?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and Mr. Ledbetter. I'd like to do things a little differently tonight. I don't have any prepared slides or prepared talking points like the previous people. So hopefully this turns out okay. Bear with me, folks. This might be a little bit boring, but it was some information that I read recently, and I'd just like to share it with you before I go on to the next thing. It's kind of mind-boggling, but it's hard to always talk about the, the homeless situation, but it is a big topic these days. And I have no intentions of offending anybody. Never would come here to do that, and I hope I don't do that tonight. This is about some of the things that California spends their money on, though. Recently, California spent approximately twenty-five billion dollars in the past five years to solve the unhoused crisis. In two thousand and eighteen, Governor Newsom publicly ordained California as a sanctuary state. These misguided state policies have provided benefits and services to illegal aliens costing California shrinking tax base thirty-one billion dollars a year, according to two thousand twenty-three cost analysis. In two thousand twenty-four, California became the first state to expand Medicaid to all the illegal immigrants residing in the state, amounting to two billion dollars in state funding annually. California's adjusted gross income has declined by eighteen billion dollars. And in two thousand and eight, California voters approved a massive high-speed rail project set to be completed in two thousand twenty with an estimated project cost of thirty-three billion dollars. Today, the initiative is nowhere close to being completed, and costs have ballooned to a hundred and twenty-eight billion dollars, which is twenty-two hundred and eighty-seven percent increase in the last sixteen years. Just information that I thought was interesting. It's kind of a, hard to imagine with that kind of spending that the state of California is not a shining state. And there's other things that would go along with that to show the opposite. But moving on, I started coming to city council meetings a few years ago, and the most important topic of the day back then was the homeless situation. As a citizen, sorry if I didn't introduce myself. My name is Jerry Stalker. There, the homeless situation has changed in the last few years. My wife and I own a business in town, and we used to interact with people, socialize, not socialize, but help people. People used to come to us and talk to us. And today, things are a lot different. Just a small example of that. Yesterday, I had a doctor's appointment, and I was leaving the hospital, driving down Brew Street. And it was nine o'clock in the morning, and I think it was about twenty-five degrees outside. And there was a gentleman walking down the middle of the street. He was wearing a T-shirt. He had to be cold, but he didn't appear to be. And as I drove by him, my first thought was I wanted to stop and ask him to move out of the middle of the road. My second thought was I should call the police because this guy is making things unsafe for the rest of the people driving on the road. I decided to proceed, and as I got to the stop sign at South Oregon Street, I looked in my rearview mirror, and the person that was going towards the hospital actually had to swerve to miss the person walking down the middle of the street. I could go on and on about how things have changed, and the people have changed. And as a business owner and a citizen, it gets to be a little scary sometimes. And I want to reiterate that I'm not here to offend anybody or shed any negative, negative light on anything. For some reason, I don't know why, but every few days or so, I, I go for a walk down the greenway and drive by the hill where people are camping now. And I have to say that the greenway is actually getting cleaned up, and I'd like to give kudos to whoever is spearheading that. I believe it's Tara, who's going to be opening the shelter soon. And I know it's a, an agenda item, but I support Mr. Ledbetter's agenda item to close the greenway and start to get that cleaned up. It's not only an environmental hazard, it actually is a fire hazard, and it also backs up the creek and creates a flood hazard. The hill itself, it, it's hard to describe it. I've had conversations with folks lately, and I think that I, I don't know how to address it. I don't know how you guys address it.
Thank you.
About five minutes up?
Yep, sure. Sorry.
I guess I'll see you in two weeks.
All right, come back. Any other public comment?
Please keep in mind, this is nothing personal. It's the law. Mary Autry. On October first, two thousand twenty-four, the city attorney, Andrew Jared, stated the law, California Government Code, Section three-six-five-one-three for voting for Paul McCoy's leave of absence. The attorney said, I quote, "Absence requires immediate action under three-six-five-one-three, which has a sixty-day time period for any council member who misses consecutive council meetings within a sixty-day period." Councilwoman Baker asked for an outline of the exact timeframe. The attorney then stated that the timeframe starts at the last council meeting that the council member attended going to the next meeting, the council member will attend. And at that timeframe, cannot be longer than sixty days. I ask you all to go back, watch that meeting for clarification to the law that was stated by this attorney on the matter of absences. This attorney holds one set of rules for one council member and a different set of rules for a different council member. Case in point, Councilman Davis was absent for 62 days from October 1st to December 2nd. And actually a third. I asked the city manager if Councilman Davis was going to be removed from council day 61 of Davis's unexcused absences. The city manager said he would ask the attorney. The attorney said, no, Drake has 70 days. It's fine. So which is it? 60 days for one council member and 70 for a different council member? Is this attorney a bad attorney? Charging taxpayers' money for bad advice, or is the law 60 days? A violation of California Code 36513 has occurred. The law states 60 days without permission. Again, Drake Davis missed 62 days. Follow the law. Remove Drake Davis from council effective immediately for missing 62 days without permission. You should be asking yourselves why the city attorney did not do that. Is it because he has such a conflict of interest that he cannot see the difference? I am not letting this matter go, nor should you. I am asking the council to call the FPPC, and I am asking this council to replace this attorney. This attorney, this city needs an attorney that will not be biased and cause a rift within the council, as this attorney does so well. This council is torn. You cannot find a mayor. You cannot choose a mayor, which has never happened before. You cannot get along with each other, and is it any wonder when we have this attorney who is meeting with his preferred city council members in public places, talking city business among public, according to customers who have overheard? This is a clear conflict of interest and maybe even a Brown Act violation. I am asking this council to have this attorney remove himself from council and no longer represent the city of Puerto Rico. City attorneys are expected to advise council and mayor without forming public, personal relationships with them. This attorney has proven he has a personal relationship with one or more city council members. The issue of Councilman Drake Davis not being removed after missing 62 days is blatantly obvious. I ask you, council, look at this very hard. Section 36513, absence without permission from council meetings for 60 days from regular, last regular meeting. A, if a city council member is absent without permission from all regular city meetings for 60 consecutively day, from 60 days consecutively from the last regular meeting he or she attended, his or her office becomes vacant and shall be filled like any other vacancy stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. There's another public comment. We'll go into item number seven. Consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial, and will be acted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval ratification of payments issued from December 8th, 2024 through January 11th, 2025. B, cash balances budget to actual and fiscal performance reports for August 2024. C, cash balances budget to actual and fiscal performance reports for September 2024. D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held December 17th, 2024. E, adopt Resolution 2025-01 of the City Council of the City of Puerto Rico, recognizing the city of Puerto Rico's 2025 contribution to the employee healthcare costs through the IRS Section 125 Cafeteria Plan. F, approval of reappointment of Tim Pope to the Puerto Rico Volunteer Fire Department. G, approve Resolution 2025-02 of the City Council of the City of Puerto Rico adopting an updated comprehensive pay schedule for full-time employees, part-time employees, and elected officials in accordance with CalPERS guidelines. H, approval of Resolution 2025-03 of the City Council of the City of Puerto Rico authorizing examination of the sales or transactions and use of tax records. The recommend City Council actually for years, the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the City Council of the City of Puerto Rico as presented. What are the wishes of the council?
This is Councilman McCoy. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman McCoy.
A second.
And a second from Councilman Davis. I'll do roll call. Councilman Claire. Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
And I, Mayor Middleton, the motion passes five to zero. Okay, eight old business. This is city manager. This is the Judd title, the mayor selection.
Yeah, give me one minute, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Puerto Rico City Council, Jason Ledbetter, the city manager once again. This item is for mayoral selection, and so I just want to go through the process. The mayor will open up the selection of a new mayor. Public comment will be received at that time. Public comment will then be closed. Oral nominations from council members are given. Acceptance of nominations from council members need to take place. So ultimately, if someone nominates you, we want to know that you accept that nomination before a vote would happen. After acceptance of nominations, a motion will be brought to close the nomination period. Motion to close the nomination period requires a second and a two-thirds vote, which for our purposes means four-fifths to proceed. If no nominations are received, the current sitting mayor will remain for a two-year term. Voting will be done by paper ballots tallied and read by the city manager. So ultimately, I have post-it notes that I will hand out to you. You will write your name in the top right corner. You will write the name of the person you were voting for in the very center, and then I will collect those, and I will read them aloud. That way, it will be as seamless as possible to make your vote, but then still be given to the public how you voted. So if there's any questions, please fire away. Otherwise, I'll leave it to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Andrew Jared, city attorney.
Yes.
I think Mr. Ledbetter recited everything correctly with exception of one point. The issue of there are no nominations received. The current sitting mayor remained for a two-year term. If there were nominations received, and you just simply could not come to a decision, I do not see any support for the position that the current mayor would stay as mayor for a two-year term. I don't know where that is coming from. We haven't discussed that previously.
Good, Mr. Ledbetter.
This is coming from the attorney, but ultimately, yeah, whatever, whatever decision or changes need to be made, we concede to or defer to Andrew.
This is, Councilman McCoy, do you have a question? Councilman McCoy, I think at this point in time, since we don't have a consensus from our attorney on how to approach this, I think that it would be best to table it until the next meeting, so that our attorney, when he is here, he can talk to us in person, and he can advise us of that, and he can also have a talk. He can chat with our city manager. I think moving forward at this time is ill-advised. We don't seem to have proper counsel.
Yeah, I apologize I couldn't be there tonight due to health reasons, Andrew Jared. The, the issue isn't whether I'm present or not. It's that I don't see where this support is as being stated for remaining for a two-year term.
Mr. Jared, I did not say that the issue was you weren't present. I said, we need to wait because we are not of a like mind within the room, and you are our city attorney, and we do take what you say to us very seriously, and I think it's going to be better if you're here and we can talk about it as opposed to as opposed to not knowing where we're going at this point in time. I don't think it's fair to anybody who would be nominated as a candidate. But I never said one thing about you, the fact that you are not here, and that's why we should do it. I said, because we need you, we need more discussion on it, and when you're here next time, we can do that.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. Yeah. Mayor Middleton, Mr. Jared, yeah, I'm a little confused because on the last, I have the agenda in front of me, at the last procedural merit did state that if there was no nominations, the mayor receives for two term, and now you're saying something different. So I'm not comfortable moving forward until we get clarification, because it seems to have changed now. So I'm not understanding when that was printed. Now there's been changes, and until I think we have a better idea or explanation, I don't think I'm comfortable moving forward at this point with until you're back present as well.
Let me be very clear about my opinion. I see no support for the position that if you cannot come to a consensus, that the mayor or vice mayor would remain for a two-year term. That is my opinion. And that does not change. What is required of you under the government code is at the time of receiving the votes that you take action to a point. That's an affirmative duty to take action to a point. A mayor or vice mayor. If there were no action taken, i.e. not even a nomination, then I suppose we would have a position of needing to continue the holdover. But I did not write the the section dealing with holding over for a two-year term. And I do not support that as the law. If someone can show some law on that, I'd be happy to look at it.
Mr. Jared, we appreciate your opinion, as you said, but we are not asking for your opinion on this. You, you, you made a statement, and now we are, I am making a statement back. Regardless of what your opinion is, quite frankly, the five of us sitting here don't, you know, care what your opinion is. We are going, I'm going off what you said is that you are not of the mind that the current mayor would sit for the next two years, as the city manager has alluded to. That is why I'm asking for a two-week holdover on this so that we can do it and do it right in two weeks. So, and I'm not asking for any statement on it from you. This is just, I'm just telling the mayor and the council how I feel.
This is Councilman Baker.
Council Baker.
And Mr. McCoy, with all due respect, please don't speak for me. You did say that all five of us were not in agreement with Mr. Jared. That's not necessarily my position, so please don't speak for me.
I stand corrected. Just I am in that position.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify the difference between nominations and then the actual vote. As I'm reading this, it says that if no nominations are received, then the current mayor's sitting will remain for a two-year term. So even if we do have nominations, and there is not the ability to close those nominations due to the lack of a orifice vote, that doesn't mean that the current mayor will sit for two years. It just means that we've come to another impasse. Is that correct?
Yeah, that question is probably better suited for Mr. Jared. Ultimately, when I started here three years ago, this was not the pathway that we determined on how we chose the mayor, and so ultimately, when we went to go do that same pathway that we had utilized before, which was just open nominations and then a vote, Mr. Jared pointed out that Rosenberg's Rules of Order actually mandate the the two-thirds or four-fifths, and so based off of a phone conversation, this staff memo was put together. So ultimately, if Mr. Jared doesn't agree with it, then I think we just defer to him because ultimately that's where the information that we've utilized to put the staff report together. So if it for some reason doesn't meet his standard, then I would just probably omit that portion of it.
Yes, I agree that it is, that if no nominations are received, that we are at an impasse. But nominations have been received, and I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that doing nothing or coming to an impasse on closing the nominations would result in an automatic holdover of a two-year term.
Thank you, Mr. Jared.
All right. Thank you. I think I'm I think I get pretty settled now, but I was confused at first because I thought he said it was omitted, so I'm sorry.
But I don't think it's Bible. I will speak the Bible, so I don't think the mayor can use it. I think somebody is speaking of it.
Okay, well, I guess we
Mr. Middleton?
Yes.
Are you you okay with this? To hold this over for another couple of weeks? Or would you rather proceed as, as the acting mayor on this issue of nominating a mayor?
It's not up to me. It's up to the council if they wish to.
Well, I'm not asking the council. I'm asking you.
Well, I can't make the decision. I'm one of five voices up here.
You do have an opinion, though, don't you?
I have an opinion, but I'm confused by what Mr. Jared is saying. I'm, you know.
Well.
I'm fine holding it over for two weeks. As it's 8:39, I'm fine with it, but it's up to the rest of the council, Mr. Davis.
Okay, so so I believe we should have a an election. I believe if you win the election, I'm all for you being the mayor. I believe that we should have the election so that we know how this council sits. I mean, if you win three to two like you did last time, that's perfect. And if you don't win three to two, that's also perfect. I will support, and I'm saying this honestly, I will support whoever's mayor, 100%. So you know, I have an opinion, the way we should go. But I think we need to I think Mr. McCoy has made some great statements, but I think we need to move forward here. I don't think we should drag our feet. And I don't want to lose the opportunity to elect a mayor. You know, I just don't want it to be grandfathered in. I think we need to do that. That's part of our ability to choose our leader.
Right.
So just to so you understand, that's kind of where I'm shooting from.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. David, Councilman Davis. Well, we we are at a different process of where we were two years ago when I was selected as it was put forward to us by Mr. Jared because of the by Mr. Jarrett because of the Rosenberg, Rosenberg is what we follow, correct? Rules. So we're in a different process of three to two moving forward. And if we're going to be honest, the reason I'm not moving, I haven't moved forward the ballot and no one's reached out to we discuss it and neither the attorney nor either the council member sitting here is whenever we hear a certain council member stating that a council member has the votes to become the mayor, they know the votes, that's obviously a meeting that has taken place or a discussion. And I'm very not comfortable moving forward, having a person on the ballot that already, a council member already said that they had the votes to become the mayor. So that's where I stand. And no one's reached out to me to ask why. Not the attorney, not the council members. So that's where I'm coming from and it's very concerning to me. And I don't feel like I am good conscious and procedure-wise feel it's necessary for me, feel it can go forward at this time because of what was, overheard what was said. And it was overheard by another person in the council chambers that a certain council member had the votes to become the mayor and no one's supposed to know that. So that's my position of moving forward at this time until we get some clarification, get some things worked out and then have a great discussion or come to some terms to move forward.
Okay, right. I'm not going to go back.
I'm just saying, that's my honesty.
Back, but you know how that is.
No, I don't know how it is. I don't.
You kind of do.
No.
Because you recruited me to vote for you one time and you recruited myself for sure.
That's different. That's different, though.
I didn't, I didn't support you at that time because of that.
I'm not talking about that, though.
I know, but that's what I, you know, that's.
I didn't know I had the votes. So it's a different, Mr. Davis, so.
Um, this is Councilwoman Baker. I'd like to make a statement. Um, I have no doubt in my mind that you're speaking of me. And I may not have used the appropriate terminology. I have spoken to people in the community and said that there is that I would be honored to be mayor. I'm not saying if I said that, oh, I have three votes, that's not really what I meant. And so let me clarify, I have no idea of who is going to vote for me for mayor. I have no idea if I'm going to be nominated. I would be honored to serve and I think that I have a good opportunity to be elected. But you know, until we have the opportunity to actually vote on the position, we're not going to know. And what makes me so incredibly sad is that we are, the democratic process is being usurped. I mean, this is what our country is founded on. One of our fundamental rights as citizens is to vote. And we're not even being allowed to go forward and vote. And if somebody feels that I have behaved inappropriately, then talk to me about it. And I could never go back and recreate conversations that have, you know, allegedly occurred. But I have never represented myself that, oh, I have three votes. I know I'm going to be mayor. And so I just want to clarify that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Hands freezing. Sorry. So, well, we can alter the process, I guess, or whatever the council wishes to do.
Council, Councilman Baker has a point. This is Councilman McCoy. This is why people are so fed up with our national government because the House and the Senate do not allow votes to go forward. There are, there are particular ways to, to, to move them forward and both sides of the table use them. We've never had this issue before because we've never had an attorney that told us we've been doing it wrong for the last hundred years. But we now know that we have been. And so we're at that point. If, if you guys, if this council wants to let it go forward, let it go forward. My concern is that we're not getting, that the council that we're getting at this point may not be covering everything or may not be fully transparent or may not be accurate, might be the better word, might not, is not accurate. Things change all the time. I understand that and things may have changed in the last week or two since our city attorney spoke with the staff in the office. Maybe things have changed now and, and so the rules have changed a little bit. So I mean, if he, if somebody wants to go forward with it, I'm fine. I, I would, I would, I understand Councilman Davis saying that and I appreciate that. I just, I don't want to go forward with something and have to come back and redo and, you know, I just, I'd like to do it right the first time. So, but I don't disagree with you.
Yes, Councilman, yeah, make sure you raise your hand at me. That's like the Councilman Claire. I didn't look left.
Mindset and just being here, I mean, I respect all of you. I wanted just what this talk was going, all these folks out here voted for us. And they tell us to make a decision. And I think we need to start doing the process to give them a decision made because it's doing a disservice to everybody else that put us up here. You know, we got to come together and make a decision. That's just my thought. And I get the concern and all that stuff. I, I understand where everybody's coming from, but my opinion on the matter is that we need to make a decision. There's people here telling our decisions. Some people make ones that make people mad. Some people don't make them very quickly, but we are obligated to make a decision. My, my two cents on the matter for this.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Thank you, Councilman Claire. Very helpful. Okay, so I guess we'll just move forward, I guess, and go back to mayor selection. So open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, it'd be appropriate at this point, as stated in the staff report, to take public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got off track. Public comment. I'm sorry. I got all lost.
Lorenzo Love, maybe you should go back to the recording and see what the, the city attorney actually said last time. Because I recall him saying towards the end of the seven rounds, if there was no nominations, the current mayor would retain his seat. This was after the second round where there was no nomination. So did he change his mind again? Because I'm pretty sure that's what he said. If there's no nominations, the current mayor retains his seat. But he said that after there was several more rounds of nominations. So you need to get this straight. You need to figure out how this procedure works. Do you go by what's in the agenda? Or do you just play it by ear? I think you need to get a, a second opinion from a different council. Because I, I don't know about you, but I, I can't trust anything this guy says because it changes from day to day, minute to minute even. If you go by what's in the agenda, Mr. Middleton retains his seat because there was, last meeting, there was second round, there was no gen, no nominations for mayor. But do we throw that out? Do we go by whatever the, the lawyer says at this minute? Maybe he'll change next time. I don't know.
Any other public comment? Okay, I will close public comment. And now did I just open a depth as for mayor selection or do we have to review?
Yeah, my understanding is now you go to oral nominations for, from council members.
Oral nominations for mayor. Okay, Councilman Clark. Oh.
I will nominate Councilman Baker.
Okay, was there any other nominations? Okay, I'll close nominations. We'll go around for.
You need a motion to close nominations?
I know. Yeah, I think so. I'm sorry.
But before you do that, I would just like to state I will accept the nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so confused right now. So we have a nomination and the acceptance of a nomination from Councilman Baker. So go around for, to place the nomination, vote for, to place for a vote.
A clarification, the motion needs to be a motion to close the nominations. That's required under Rosenberg's rules. It's the only thing that's required under Rosenberg's rules as to decide it.
Oh, okay. A motion to close nominations. I thought I did that part.
I'll make the motion to close the nominations for mayor.
Okay. Have a motion from Councilman Baker.
A second.
There's a second from Councilman Davis. Okay, I'll do roll call to close. Councilman Claire. Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
No.
And Mayor Middleton, no. But that, it's just three to two, correct? I believe. I don't have the instructions in front of me. What's that?
Three to two.
Okay. And now, and now we go to, for the number, for ballot, correct? For the.
No, Mr. Mayor, you, again, we're in this situation where you have made nominations or made a nomination. The motion was to close the nominations, so the nominations remain open at this point. I would remind everyone what the, what Rosenberg says. Motion to close nominations. When choosing officers for the body, such as the chair, nominations are in order either from a nominating committee or from the floor of the body. A motion to close nominations effectively cuts off the right of the minority to nominate officers and it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. That's all that Rosenberg says. You do not have any rules of procedure adopted by yourselves to govern this issue. So that's what we're left with is by state law, you're required to appoint a mayor. And that was supposed to have been done at the same time as accepting the results of the, the vote, the, the recent election. And so at this point, the nominations are not closed. The nominations remain or open.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Sir, I thought I had to go around one more time like last time we did it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the reason you had to go around last time you did is the nominations remained open. And there were seven rounds of various permutations of who would be nominated, at the end of which that too was not closed. And you all reached an impasse as to closing the nominations. That's when, at some point therein, I made the statement that, so we didn't have a vacuum in government, that you would remain as mayor for the pendency of resolving this issue. I apologize if I didn't say for the pendency of this issue, but that's all that that means is that you remain mayor until this item is resolved. What previously had been done without authority was the, the, the role of mayor and vice mayor was vacated. There's nothing that supported that position and that's what I gave an opinion on. It got us into the situation where we looked at Rosenberg's rules. And sure enough, there is the, this issue of closing nominations.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Davis.
Ask Mr. Jarrett a question.
Sure. Mr. Davis has a question.
Is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Jarrett, I'm a little confused here about the strength of Rosenberg in our election process. Is, is there, if it's not spoken to, is Rosenberg what guides us? If it's spoken to, do we have to do what is in the ordinance? And if it's in conflict of Rosenberg, is that okay?
So an ordinance would supersede Rosenberg's even if you adopted Rosenberg's as your procedure, which you did. I do not see anything that's in conflict with the motion procedure called for under Rosenberg's rules. Rosenberg's rules is not your rules of procedure as it relates to adopting or I'm sorry, appointing a mayor or vice mayor or any other offices. It's simply your rules of procedure. And there it says if you're going to have a motion for nominations, you need to have a motion to close nominations and that requires the super majority. That's all that Rosenberg speaks to here. Fact that you don't have rules that, that you've adopted that apply to how the selection process would occur and, you know, what it means and so forth and how it's done is what has gotten you into this situation.
I'm, Mr. Jarrett, I apologize. I, I really didn't understand what you said. You, you know, maybe it was, I just didn't hear it properly, which is highly possible. But if we set up an ordinance that says we, let's say, go back and use the process that we used two years ago, can we put that in our ordinances and live by that? Or do we have to go for our procedures through Rosenberg? That's law. You can't vary.
And I don't. Rosenberg, so to answer your question directly, yes, you can do that. Or you can create, the city council can adopt an ordinance that addresses the procedure for appointing mayor and other positions. You do not have that currently and that also is not specified under Rosenberg's. All that Rosenberg says is it, when a vote for nominations comes about, there needs to be a motion to close nominations.
Okay, I've got that. I've, I've got that. Thank you. So as a group here, if we choose to. as a group here, if we choose to have an ordinance, can we have your guidance in that? Or do we have to do it without you?
Oh, no, absolutely. You can ask me to draft an ordinance. Other cities that represent have similar ordinances. You do not.
Okay. Well, I for one would like to see that. Because I don't like to be held up. May maybe we're going to get to it next time as Mr. McCoy has requested. But when you show up and your illness has been healed, would you kind of have something for us that would be acceptable? I'm just one of five, but that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Yeah, good point is that we did ask Mr. Jared in December of 2020, or sorry, November of 2023, over a year ago, to start working with us and working on a code of conduct and rules, and that has not been done. So it's been over a year that this council into Mr. Claire, asked him to work on it because we have previous councils have been doing things that weren't really in writing a handbook, so to say, on how procedure was supposed to be done. And so here we are. So my question was a few weeks ago on how it's not a violation to ask if you want to be mayor, you can't ask for a vote. You just say, I hope you have my support, blah, blah, blah. That was all my question was. Then saying, I don't think we were, you know, this is the way we done it. And Mr. Jared informed me that, you know, where is it written? He said, it's not written that way that we have to fall back on those rules. He directed Mr. Ledbetter to come up with that procedure, which I was confused by. We're all confused by. So we don't have a code of conduct that we've been asking Mr. Jared for over a year to start having organization and policy as Ms. Councilman Baker has asked for before that we have a guidebook manual or whatever, so to speak, to make things go smooth because we're all confused. And so I would like us to start working on it. And so we know what direction we do to choose the mayor and move forward, but we need to have some organization because it doesn't look good on us. It doesn't look good in front of the public. And go from there. But not rush it through either, but take time to work on it where we have all the, you know, nuts and bolts to everything besides this one issue because there's a lot of things that I think we're supposed to have in there that, you know, what the mayor is supposed to do, what the council members are supposed to do. And we don't have that.
Well, and we've asked for the code of conduct.
Councilman McCoy.
And then we we.
Make sure we raise our hand and don't speak.
Sorry. This is Councilman McCoy. We've asked for this code of conduct. We've also asked because one of the things that P staff is not clear on is how does something get on an agenda? Do I just ask for it to go on? Used to be you had to have two or three people. You had to have two, I think, when I first came on, but that's unwritten. That is also an ordinance. Those are the types of things that we need to to get in order so that we don't have issues like this that happen again. Again, unfortunately, like just with the code of conduct, we asked, I think, well over eight months ago for our city attorney to, you know, he to work on it. He volunteered to work on it. I had a meeting with him. He's indicated he met with all of you. Not you, James, but you know, I mean, but I don't think he met with you, but he met with the three of us. And yet we don't have a code of conduct. And that was the first thing we got. You're going to a training next week or this week. You're going to a training. That's the first thing I got in my training in Sacramento was that was the code of conduct and 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 it's real important. And we we found it that we have it. So yeah, we do need those ordinances. There's more than just this ordinance. We we've probably got 15 or 20 ordinances that we need on how the meeting should be conducted. Yes.
Right. I have a copy of that code of conduct that we don't have at home. So.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify.
Andrew has given you a copy of that code of conduct.
I I got a code of copy of the code of conduct for Mr. Ledbetter. When we had that meeting over at the YPD, that was what we worked on, and I have a copy of that still.
Yeah, but we never got we got into, I think, in two hours, we got into the first thing. Yeah. And it fell and and no, Mr. Ledberg did an admirable job, but it fell apart. That's not. But it wasn't because of him. It was because of the five of us at the time, I believe. But the code of conduct that Mr. Jared, our attorney, has been working on, have you seen it? Has he given you a copy yet?
No, but I was interviewed like you probably.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Baker.
Um, thank you. Since it has been a significant number of months since we had discussed updating the code of conduct. My concern is that waiting for that entire code to be revised and necessary ordinances. I believe that it was Ms. Ms. Aldrich that talked about how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? And so I would like to just throw out that the council, we could direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance specifying the process to elect the mayor. That changes the vote necessary to close the nominations from a excuse me, from a four fifths vote to a simple majority vote of two thirds. And to bring that ordinance back to us at the next meeting for a first reading. So that we can move forward with the election.
Are you asking for the for Jason to write it? Or are you asking for Andrew to write it? Because Andrew does not work for Jason. Andrew works for the five of us. And he only works for the five of us. He doesn't work for us individually. We don't meet with him individually. We don't do things with him individually. Individually, he again, this is part of your your ordinance, part of your ordinances. Andrew worked for the five of us. It's called a city council. Does not work for you, 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 or you. Matter of fact, you are one of the one of the unwritten ordinances. The mayor is the only one that contacts him. So who is going to write that? Is that going to be Jason or Andrew?
Can we direct Andrew, the city attorney, to draft that ordinance?
And then we just want to do things piecemeal? We're just going to like, because I mean, I mean, he's taken eight months to get and hasn't gotten us.
Mr. Mayor.
Code of co- excuse me, excuse me, I'm speaking right now, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you. He's he's taken eight months to not get us anything. And and we're going to put that's why I pressed him earlier on on something that, you know, can he get it to us in a week? But, you know, we can't. We can't sit back and cherry pick what we want to do as a council. We can't cherry pick the ordinances that we want. Oh, I would like to be able to call the city manager and say, put this on the, I'm speaking of me only. I would like to be able to call him and say, put this on the agenda. It's it's not good. It's not good government. It's not good business for to do that. So there's a whole bunch of ordinances that we need, including what you're speaking of. But we have an ordinance that governs that right now, and that is Rosenberg's. And that's what he brought up.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jared, okay.
I think I need to clarify something here about my work on the code of conduct, as it's being called. I did meet with all five former, the former council member Keg and the remainder of the four of you. My meetings with, actually, I don't believe I met with Mr. McCoy. We spoke on the phone very briefly. As to all members, none of
Let him speak.
conversations dealt with the issue of what's before you tonight, selection of a mayor and how to address that. The issue is I was understanding it with the code of conduct was more of decorum and civility. And those were the issues that each council member really stressed and were addressing. Not the all of the other issues. There may be a lot of issues that we need to to get into. Not one time was this issue before you on how to select a mayor addressed in there. Additionally, whether it is a I was not understanding that either what was presented to me or in any conversation with any of you that that was going to be an ordinance put into your city code. It was rather going to be a a procedure document that would not have the rule of an ordinance. Now I think I have a little better understanding from tonight's conversation of what a couple of you would like to see. I'm not certain as to what the con the content of all of that would need to be, but that's part of what the discussions with the council in a council meeting be about. There were, I guess, a couple of specific issues here and there that were important to folks, and that was the importance of getting to that. The reason why it's taken time is I was told to by several council members at the time that it wasn't as important as other things that were on the agenda. And I believe around August or so forth, I'll go with that that timeframe. Councilmember Baker did request that this be brought forward. And and speaking with her, bringing it forward after the first of the year was agreed upon. No one else is is addressed that this is, you know, late or something like that. But I understand now that this is an important issue for you, and I will again start working on on the code of conduct. I think the way to go about that would be for me to come up with a list of items that should be covered. Present that to you for you to fill out whatever list additional items you would like to see on that code. And then we proceed with that. But tonight wouldn't be the night to do that. As for the motion, as I was hearing it from Councilmember Baker, I believe it was stated a motion to switch from the four fifths requirement to a two thirds requirement. I want to be clear on that. That's those are the same. So if the motion is to get away from the the current requirement under Rosenberg's rules of a two thirds majority for a motion to close nominations, that's a very easy ordinance to write. And if you want it as an ordinance, you want it as a resolution, either way, that can be brought back to you by next meeting, no problem.
Yeah, just for clarification, Mr. Jared, this is the city manager. I have the notes from Councilmember Baker that she was requesting a simple majority.
Thank you.
Doesn't look right.
Mr. Jared, did I hear you say that Mrs. Baker, Councilwoman Baker asked you to wait on the CO of C until after the first of the year? Or did I not hear? Did I hear that incorrectly?
If you heard that, if that's what I said, that is not what I meant. What I meant was I asked her when we she expected me to bring that back. And she said after the first of the year was far. Okay. Which is customary when a council member is asking for something for me to confirm with that council member what their expectation was.
Did you? Did you share that with any of the other council members that are here? The other four council members that that you had talked to Councilwoman Baker and that you had decided with Councilwoman Baker that it would be better to bring the COC back? The CFC back after the first of the year?
No, that is not what I said. It happened and no one asked if I, you know, when it was coming back. And there was no timeline given. It was it was bringing this back in the future.
Let me let me retrace steps then. Did Mrs. Did you and Councilwoman Baker have a conversation, just the two of you? Were you the two of you engaged? I don't I don't. She asked you when it was coming back, the 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 CFC, and you engaged her by saying it was coming back at the beginning of the new year, or she said she wanted it back at the beginning of the new year? How did we arrive at when it was coming back?
No, that's not what happened.
Would you tell us what happened, please?
At the meeting when I when she asked for that to come back.
At what meeting, sir?
I don't know the date.
I'd like the date. You work for the five of us, sir.
Yeah, I don't know the date.
I'd like for you to find the date and and.
I won't be doing that. It's it's in the agenda. It's it's the date that when when that was asked for, if you want me to bill for that, I certainly could, I suppose.
So, okay, so you spoke with her then.
What happened? She said there was the the request to bring this back. And I then approached her and said, when was she expecting that? And after the first of the year was what was stated.
Did you bother? Again, did you happen to mention that to the other four council members that you were going to bring it back more at the beginning of the new year?
No, no one asked as to when it was due. And so I did. And so that's when it was, I mean, it's on Ford, you know, sometime after the first of the year, right? It's very.
Mr. Jared, I've been asking for, I've been harping at you up until about three months ago. I've been harping at Jason. I've been harping at other council members that we need to get a code of conduct. And yet you have seemingly been kind of hiding and not for whatever reason. And I understand if you're not qualified to do it, it's okay. That's that's not an issue. You and I've talked about this before when you interviewed me and I sat in Councilman's Claire Claire's chair and and you sat in the next chair when you interviewed me about this, oh, eight, six, eight months ago. It was it was a priority, but it didn't appear to be a priority to you as far as I could tell, but it was a priority to at the time to at least three council members. So I'm concerned that we're having discussions, individual discussions with council members when you work for this entire council. You do not work, sir. You do not work for one of us. You work for the five of us. Therefore, when you have conversations with one of the councilmen, whether it's myself or or even Mr. Middleton, you are required to let the rest of the council members know what you talked to me or to talk to Mr. Middleton about. That that's just common courtesy and it's just it's just being forthright and forthcoming. So, yeah, I've got some real concerns. You could you can turn you say you can now turn over a procedure to us and just it's no big deal. But you've had eight months to do a code of conduct. And you can't seem to get it together to bring it back to us until one council member speaks with you and then you let them know, oh, yeah, I can have it back by the beginning of the, yeah, I can if when they suggest that back by the beginning of the year, you're like, okay, I can do that. And that's very disconcerting to me because you are, we are relying on you to 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 tell us what the law says and give us your advice. And then the five of us make the decision. Again, you don't make the decision for us. You don't make it for Jason. You don't make it for Juliana or anybody else. You let us know you would you advise us as a council and then we tell them. So, yeah, I've got some real concerns right now about 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 your ability to operate and function well with this city.
I think you're misstating factually some conversations that happened there, and particularly the conversation with you. If you would allow me to explain what what I understood you to say.
Before we go into all that, I I really think this is getting out of hand myself. And I would request that we would you come back, Mr. Jared? And because I'm getting different answers from you as well. And I'm confused about the process. One thing's changing, one thing's not. I would ask that we table eight A eight A and B and bring this back, not next meeting, but at a future meeting. Discuss with you sitting in front of us. What we like to see is if we're going to change in our code of conduct, but work on the whole code of conduct and get that changed to where that may be, but have a discussion with you here. And, you know, maybe you need to have a conversation with Mr. McCoy outside in front of our chamber or our full chamber full of our citizens that now it's getting to be nine twenty at night. It's freezing cold in here. And we seem more confused than we were on December seventeenth, at least I do. And I think, Mr., I don't want to speak for him, but Mr. Davis has some questions and wants to understand maybe as well. I don't know. But anyways, that's what I recommend is that we work on getting the procedure. Hopefully make it easier, but I don't think it's going to be done by next meeting. Come back and so we can all have a discussion with you present with us here. And that's what I request. Ms. Baker has her hand up, so I'm going to go to Ms. Baker. Councilman Baker.
I thank you very much. I would just like to clarify something because I feel like. Uh, uh, thank you very much. I would just like to clarify something because I feel like um. There is a lot of assumptions about my actions. Um, when I was a first elected to city council. I was told that as a city council member, we absolutely each one of us have the right. To contact the attorney and speak to the attorney. That's what I was told. Um, and that is what I have been operating under. Um, I'm sure that I'm not the only one that has had side conversations. With Mr. Jared about issues that come up with members of the public. Um, but I really want to go on record as stating that there was nothing nefarious. About my discussion with Mr. Jared um about the code of conduct. Uh, the public may not know, but each council member has the opportunity to meet weekly with the city manager. And during those meetings, we discuss uh everything from soup to nuts. Whatever is on our mind, we talk about um the state of the city. Excuse me just a minute. We we talk about everything. In one of the meetings that I had with Mr. Ledbetter, and I would like to say that this was sometime in October. Um, I said I'd really like to see the code of conduct come back. But because of the timing of the election, I don't know when it would be appropriate to bring that back. But I would like to bring it back. I would like to have it come back. And so as often as uh as it happens, Mr. Ledbetter is very, very efficient. He uh, you know, follows up on things, and I believe that he mentioned to you. That I wanted to bring the code of conduct back. At a meeting uh of this council during a break, Mr. Jared, you came up to where I was sitting. You said to me, oh, I understand you want the code of conduct to come back. And I said, yeah, but let's wait until after the first of the year after the election, and we have a new councilman. That is what happened, and I I just don't want it represented that there's a side relationship. Or anything, again, I want to use the word nefarious, um, that is going on. There is no intent on my part. I believe there was no intent on Mr. Jared's part to do anything sneaky. And that is the statement that I want to make. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's exactly the way I recall the the order of events as well.
Thank Councilman Baker. Thank you, Mr. Jared. So with that said, oh, Councilman Baker.
Motion um that we direct. The city attorney to draft an ordinance specifying the um. Election process for mayor. That um includes the process when closing nominations. That a simple majority vote is required to, excuse me. Uh, to close nominations, and I would like that to come back at the next meeting so that we can move forward with this process.
I'll second that.
Oh, for the other question? Yeah, call for question. So again, what we want to do is just go piecemeal on this with the attorney and do one thing at a time. Are we going to do one of these every every meeting we have? Is the next one going to be at the next meeting? Should I bring up that we need to know how many people need to approach? Uh, this uh the city manager and the attorney in order to get something brought forward, you know, to get something put on the agenda?
Um, so um, Mr. Mr. McCoy, if I I could just point out.
Councilmaker.
That there is um actually an ordinance that specifies city code procedures. And when you look at that, those sections have all been adopted independently over the years.
Yes.
So it's not uncommon to have an ordinance uh to have things come back piecemeal.
Uh, no, but and I and I agree with you. It isn't uncommon, but right now we're looking at. We're looking at many things that need to be adopted. We also, um, Councilman Baker, before you came on, we go went ahead and dropped the um. Uh, the ordinance that said you had to have a horse trough in front of your uh in front of your business. Uh, because up until I came on, you still had to have a horse trough in front of your business. We also dropped the ordinance that said that women uh had to wear heels. If they were playing uh tennis, if they were on the courts, uh because we didn't think that was so. So, yes, some things have come on piecemeal, but right now we're not talking about piecemeal. We're talking about ordinances to deal with how we function as a a as a as a group. And again, we can adopt them one at a time as they fit our needs. So like when we have another issue where we're disagreeing on things, uh, we can go, you know what? Let's get, let's let's get a new ordinance written that says only one person has to uh tell uh the city manager, whoever that might be. The city manager to get something on, you know, on the agenda. So, and I can tell you that when I came on, um, I I and I mean no ill will towards you. Um, I'm I'm trying to figure out, the attorney is changing his mind. I'm not saying he did anything nefarious. I I wouldn't thi- I wouldn't think you would. Uh, so I'm not saying that. But I am trying to figure out. Kind of where we're going vis a vis what, you know, the city attorney is telling. He's saying one thing to us. He said a different thing to our staff over in the building. I just think, I think we need to flesh things out before we start to make other decisions. So, I mean, I I I can't see going in piecemeal and going through. I think we need to go through and look at and figure out what needs to be put in ordinance. And again, I'm going to say that perhaps this attorney is not the attorney to do it. Perhaps he can, he continues as our city attorney, but we have somebody else come in from the firm that he works for. Or we have some, we have his firm, we get somebody else from the firm to come in and work with us on everything. So, because we're obviously, uh, you know, I am not convinced that I'm hearing. I'm not convinced that what he's saying is what he's telling me. Corey's not convinced with that, that or the mayor isn't at this point in time. So, we're all frustrated about it. But frustration, again, I mean, frustration is good because it makes you do things. Then you can look back and go, eh, that wasn't too smart of a deal. Make you do things quickly.
Uh, question, uh, Mr. Jared is um, if I recall back on December seventeenth, when it was um. I think Councilman Davis wanted it to change and to change the rules of the. And I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong or explain, to change the rules if we go against um. What's in Rosenberg, it still takes. Two thirds of a vote, correct?
So you're, I think you're um.
Because we voted no against to move it forward for three, two at that time.
Yeah, I think what you're asking about is a motion to set aside the rules. And that's what was discussed on the seventeenth. A motion to set aside the rules pursuant to Rosenberg's rules is a super majority vote. What um the the motion to um by Councilmember Baker to. Instruct me to draft an ordinance is something different. That ordinance would take a simple majority to amend um the city code. Two different things.
Okay.
Just for clarification, uh, I got the first, but I thought I heard someone say they seconded that motion. Okay.
Counselor, Councilman Davis did, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, you have another question?
You know that Mr. Ledbetter is our employee. And and we see him alone once in a while every week. Mr. Jared is in the same position, so I don't think we have uh. I think we still have the right to see him singly. On the phone call, but unfortunately, he's not the same right Mr. Better is. But I, that's the way I see it, Mr. McCoy.
I would have.
Mr. Mayor, I mean.
That's it. I would. Oh, okay. I would have to look at his contract, but he works actually for the council, doesn't work for us. And I can tell you that when I came on council six years ago, I was told you must have permission to call him from the mayor. And I know that other councils within this county, if you, if I wanted to call him. Then either the city manager sits in on the call or the mayor sits in on the call. Because he's working for all of us. He doesn't work for me. So that's just, again, that's how I was trained when I came on by council and by, you know, and by staff. Um, and it's, yeah, it's what I see. But if we want to make, do an ordinance about it, that's great. But see, again, right now, we're doing ordinances. What we're doing is if something bothers me, I'm going to ask for an ordinance. No, I'm not going to ask for an ordinance. Uh, you know, we're we're gonna, we're gonna go on and hopefully we'll, you know, we'll work it out. But, you know, we can ask for an ordinance every time, you know, a new ordinance every time that something doesn't go the way I want it to go. But in fact, what we need to do is go through those ordinances, in my opinion, Councilman Davis. We need to go through those ordinances, and we need to do them in groups. We do need to, we need to have, again, uh, eating an elephant, one bite at a time. But we need to go through rather than take ten or fifteen or twenty years to get through them. Uh, that's kind of, well, I don't want, I'm not even gonna, anyway. What taking fifteen or twenty years to get through them is not, is not what we need to do.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I call for the question, please.
Well, I don't know what question, what question? Oh, I thought she said, would you ask the question? Well, what question are you talking about? Yeah, we called for the vote. I just to just comment before we go, I I have concerns about it being next time around just because it takes so long. And it's very serious. It's not a change, but I'll go for. Vote. Um, uh, so Councilman Baker, go ahead, go ahead. Go back again. I'm sorry, but I can't remember what it was that you asked for.
So here's what I have.
What was the direction, Mr. Ledbetter?
Uh, yeah, Baker motion to direct city attorney to draft an ordinance specifying for selection of mayor. That includes a process that allows a simple majority for the selection of the mayor. And then Davis seconds that motion. Does that sound accurate?
Um, yeah, simple majority uh to close the nominations.
Can you read it one more time after you rewrite, please?
Baker's motion to direct city attorney to draft an ordinance specifying for selection of mayor. That includes a process that allows a simple majority to close nominations for the selection of mayor?
Yes, and to be brought back to us at the next meeting.
Okay, so let me, I'm I'm gonna, does the word that includes? That's assuming that there's some other things in there that we are also changing? That includes as a, basically makes a statement. I mean, are are we doing, are we putting other things in there right now, or are we just changing the way we vote?
That's I'm, that's uh because.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you asking me?
I'm just, I mean, he's asking a general question.
Asking a gen- a general question because basically what you're you're doing is you're leaving, you're leaving it open to slip other things in. When you say including, you're not saying including, but you're not saying including but not limited to, or including but limited to, or. Uh, a a vote or uh to bring something out of nomination just needs. Um. Simple majority. Simple majority is fifty percent plus one. How would you, how would our attorney wordsmith that?
Mr. Jared?
Yes, as I'm understanding the assignment. Um, it is to um have an ordinance that allows you to. Um, for procedure on how the selection process of a mayor will occur. And included in that would be that the motion for to close nomination would be on a simple majority. Not on a super majority.
Okay, but we're, they're not asking about the whole procedure. They're only asking about coming out of, out of nomination, correct?
I I did not hear it that way. No, I, what I heard was draft an ordinance to specify the election process for mayor. That would include a simple majority to close the nominations.
I'm.
It's, yeah.
I think he needs to come back and meet with us.
Too loose, it's too, it's not worth it, so.
Okay, so.
I I guess we put it back to the maker of the motion. Um, it wouldn't, whether um Councilmember Baker, um, that's what the motion was. That's what I wrote down as she was saying.
I'm putting it back to you, Councilman Baker. Yes, Mr. Jared says.
I. That is the motion that I made. As.
And which was seconded.
Yes.
Can you read, read that again? I'm sorry.
I don't have that. I just prefer to and uh to Mr. Jared has written the motion down. And so ultimately, um, if he wanted to restate it that way, we have it in the minutes. So that Cindy um Prohoska, our clerk, can have access to it tomorrow uh for the minutes. That would be helpful.
Mr. Jared, can you restate it, please?
To direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance specifying the election process for mayor. Which would include a simple majority to close the nominations for mayor.
Okay.
Is that the motion that was made, Ms. Baker?
Um, yes, um, as well as to bring that ordinance back to the city council. At our next regular meeting for our first reading.
Understood.
Okay, and then I had the motion, so motion, that motion's from Councilman Baker. And then um the second was from Councilman Davis. Okay, thank you. Councilman Claire, are you awake over there? Councilman Claire, roll call. Okay, Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy. Nay. Uh, Mayor Middleton, be it nay. Uh, most passes three to two. Okay, we'll move on. And go to. Let's see.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a, I'd like to make a suggestion that the next two items be moved with the the. Um, the other item that just uh we just did. So that would be the mayor pro tem and then the vacant committee positions.
Okay, yeah, it's cold in here. So um, is the uh council agreement to move um. The next two items as well to the next council meeting. It's cold and getting late. Okay, yes.
So just to make sure the minutes are clear, you were tabling items eight A, B, and C to the next meeting?
Uh, so going back, we're tabling eight A, B, C. And we're tabling uh to bring back the next meeting, ten A, B, C.
I'm sorry, uh, ten is is what's coming up, so.
Oh, I thought you were tabling that as well.
No, no, we're just, I'm just requesting that the, since the mayoral selection. And the mayor pro tem and the uh committee appointments all kind of coincide with.
Oh, see, okay.
The selection of the mayor, but I would, I would need to know, when do you want those items brought back, all three of them, I guess? After the ordinance?
Two readings of the ordinance?
Mm-hmm, yes. Mm-hmm, yes.
That would make the most sense to me. I just want to make sure everybody is okay with that.
Okay, yes. Okay, so you are gonna go for a ten? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we still, we still have three very important items we'd like to discuss.
So we'll, we'll scratch that. So we are moving on to ten. Item ten. Correct. Yep, okay. You got that, Cindy, up there, poor thing? Okay, thank you. Okay. So, planning manager. So ten A, home key and grant application for permit, permit, I'm sorry, permanent supportive housing. So, Aliyah.
Good evening, council members. This is Aliyah Roakalazra, your planning manager. Before you, we have a discussion and recommended action to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a joint application to and participation in the Home Key Plus program for the development of permanent supportive housing for individuals experiencing homelessness. So city staff have been working with Danco, a housing developer, over the past two years on a home key application, um, for the construction of approximately fifty permanent supportive housing units along Deer Creek Way. Initially, the project was supposed to convert a motel or a hotel into housing. We've now pivoted to new construction along Deer Creek Way just north of the Deer Creek Apartments. The project is going to be really similar to Siskiyou Crossroads in that there will be forty-eight low-income units. Well, half of the project will be low-income units and half will be permanent supportive housing units, similar to Siskiyou Crossroads in that half is low-income, half is permanent supportive housing. The current program name is the North Mountain Permanent Supports, Supportive Housing. Um, it would provide new construction of cottage cluster style housing, case management, healthcare, and mental health services to people experiencing or at risk of homelessness. Um, as you saw earlier in the presentation, this program aligns with, um, the city objective of, um, providing more housing to our community and addressing the housing crisis within our community. I'm going to condense, um, the staff report a bit and, um, just run through the background a little bit. Permanent supportive housing is long-term, community-based housing and supportive services for unhoused persons with disabilities, um, behavioral health challenges, including substance use and mental health challenges. This program is consistent with several housing element programs. Um, I'm going to skip those for now, but if you have any questions about them, I'm happy to answer questions later on. Danco will be writing the grant, so, um, they will submit the application at the beginning of February after the application period's open. Applications are accepted on a first-come, first-served basis. I forgot to mention that the granting agency is the Department of Housing and Community Development. So they're overseeing this process. They'll open the application period at the end of January. Danco, the housing developer who's writing the application, will submit. And then they will notify applicants on a rolling basis after they review the applications. There would be no impact to the city's general fund, um, for submitting this grant application outside of staff time to review it. This item is not subject to environmental review because applying for a grant is not considered a project under the California Environmental Quality Act. The suggested motion before you tonight is motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five-zero-four, authorizing the submission of a joint application to and participation in the Home Key Plus program for the development of permanent supportive housing for individuals experiencing homelessness with the Danco Group. And I just want to reiterate, reiterate again that the item before you is just approving the application. It's not for the project itself. Those items, uh, such as site plan and, um, any other, um, building, building plans will be reviewed at a later date. This is just the first step. So with that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you, Aliyah. Questions from council? Mr. David, Council Davis?
I, I have one. No, I'm not. This is a motion to apply for a grant. Is that basically what you're doing here?
That's correct. It would be a motion authorizing the city manager to apply for the grant and sign the grant documents.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Another question? Any, um, public comment, correct?
Yes.
Yep, public comment. Okay, I'll close public comment. Go back to the council. What are the wishes of the council? Councilman McCoy?
Um, I move that we approve the motion to adopt resolution two-zero-two-five-zero-four, authorizing the submission of a joint application to and participation in the Home Key Plus program for the development of permanent supportive housing for individuals experiencing homelessness with the Danco Group.
A motion from Council McCoy and Mayor Middleton. I will second. I'll go for a roll call. Councilman Claire? Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
And yes, motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Aliyah.
Thank you.
Okay, and this is, uh, today's city manager. This is agenda title Warming Center Grant Program. I'm gonna use one here tonight. My hands are freezing. Now we know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wayrica City Council, Jason Ledbetter here, uh, the city manager for the city of Wayrica. So the Wayrica City Council directed city staff to explore options for opening a warming center at December third, twenty-twenty-four Wayrica City Council meeting. The Wayrica City Council preferences in exploring warming center opportunities were to find a site other than Wayrica City Hall, as, which would make a lot of sense right now. As the space was not suitable for warming centers, um, and to engage nonprofits and third parties that may be interested in providing this service with financial support from the city of Wayrica. City staff explored options with the county of Siskiyou. The county of Siskiyou administrator was asked about the county providing a stage bus to act as a mobile warming center that could be idled at each site. A warming center was needed. The county administrator stated that she would take this request to the board of supervisors meeting. Uh, we are waiting to hear back from the county of Siskiyou on this inquiry. Uh, staff engaged local members of the Continuum of Care Advisory Board who were attempting to create a mobile warming center with a shipping container and trailer system that would be utilized at needed locations when a warming center was requested by the city council. And that exploration is paused currently. Uh, the city of Wayrica then reached out to the Wayrica Methodist Church, who has partnered on warming centers with the city of Wayrica in the past. And the Wayrica Methodist Church has stated that they can facilitate our requests and would be able to have their own volunteers. Would only need the Wayrica Police Department to, uh, patrol, or Wayrica Police Patrol to stop by periodically during the evening. So the city of Wayrica staff is proposing a warming center grant program after conferring with, uh, legal counsel on this. Um, it was an interesting idea to, uh, to have kind of a grant program. And so that would be funded with a maximum, what we're articulating here, what I'm articulating tonight, would be funded with a maximum of six thousand dollars in the twenty-four to twenty-five fiscal year budget. The grant program would pay three hundred dollars for any participating local organization that requests to operate a warming center in the city of Wayrica with the approval of the Wayrica, uh, city manager. The city of Wayrica would provide the funding and would have the Wayrica Police Department periodically check in on the warming center throughout the evening. But the city of Wayrica would not staff the site with law enforcement or city staff. Uh, this is very loose and that's why, you know, we were tasked with trying to find a solution. And this is the one that's come to pass. So ultimately, we're working, we're looking for input tonight from city council on altering this, changing this, looking a different direction or buying into this idea. But currently, to be considered for a city of Wayrica grant to operate a warming center, the applicant would need to contact the city manager, Jason Ledbetter, at the phone number listed here or at my email address. The applicant would need to have a suitable facility and volunteer staff to operate the site. Once the applicant request is made to the city manager, we'll then determine, uh, the need for a warming center based on city council comment given tonight on the elements that make up the need to have a warming center. Some of those elements, uh, that will be considered are temperature, wind chill, and precipitation. The decision to open a warming center will be judged on the combination of freezing temperatures, snow and/or rainfall determined to be at an elevated risk level, wind chill and the daily high temperature in relation to the diurnal shift in overnight temperatures. So the fiscal impact would be three hundred dollars per, per warming center, uh, with a not to exceed six thousand dollars in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And so we're looking for broad discussion this evening and direction to staff if there needs to be alterations made on this idea. Um, or if this idea is acceptable, then we're looking for a motion to approve the city of Wayrica Warming Center Grant Program and allocate six thousand dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Questions for Mr. Ledbetter? Councilman McCoy?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, Mr. Ledbetter, or twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal budget?
Uh, yeah, we're currently in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions or comments, concerns, council members? Councilman Baker?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Ledbetter, um, my mind is a little cold right now. My hands are a little cold. My voice is a little cold. Um, so I think it's kind of ironic that we decided this place was not appropriate. This building was not appropriate for a warming center. Um, I guess my question has to do with, um, the requirements that the organization would need to meet as far as like liability or to ensure that they have, um, an appropriate location. Um, is that something that's going to be written into the agreement or?
Yeah, there's real, this is a very loose idea, um, in order to resolve, um, the kind of direction at trying to solve this, um, trying to solve there being no warming center location. And so that's really up to you guys ultimately. I'm looking for that direction. I would ultimately say, um, you know, that you had, uh, you know, that a lot of the religious institutions ultimately have, uh, facilities that would work, uh, appropriately. Um, but ultimately, I would look for you guys and maybe some input from Mr. Jared on what the requirements should be, what would make the most legal sense for the liability and for, um, what we're allowing to happen. Uh, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent clear on, on that answer. I'm sorry.
Oh, you know, um, if, that's okay. I just want to make sure that, um, any agreement that we enter to, into our liability is covered. That's, that's my, my concern. And then also, um, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk with you about this out of Friday meeting or just bring it up here, um, in the past, um, for whatever reason, that communication about the location and the timing of warm, warming centers has not always reached, um, me. And, um, so I would just like to go on record as stating that I would like all of the council to be notified when warming centers are opened as well as, um, how the warming centers are advertised, that they're open, where people can find that information. So we can have that upfront for people.
Yeah, and I would look, um, yeah, that's, those are great questions. I would ask Mr. Jared about the liability and possibly the, like, what oversight the city would want to have on the selection of the site. And then ultimately, uh, um, we could even, you guys can make any type of determination here this evening. You could have that as the mayor gets to decide the warming center. You can have, I just had default to the city manager, so we didn't need to call a special meeting every time we wanted to, uh, to have one of these. But we certainly could notify all council members. If you guys decide to move forward, we could notify all council members and then ultimately advise as to where the, um, advertisement's taking place.
Thank you.
Councilman Baker, any other questions? Comments from council members?
Looking for guidance from us?
I gotta go to public comment first.
I'll be looking for guidance tonight as to, uh, the justification of a warming center. Uh, if that's just a decision that you would like me to make based off of the factors that are listed. And then ultimately, Councilmember Baker brings up some great points about liability and location selection.
Public comment.
And just to clarify, because I'm just, uh, the, the city attorney's texting me right now, but I thought I made it clear that it would be three hundred dollars per night. Okay, thank you.
Uh, evening, council members. Jerry Stalker. Um, I know somebody that might be interested in, uh, providing a warming shelter effective immediately. Um, so I would just need to pass on to them, um, to contact you for.
And I know it's not question and answer, but we're gonna find that out tonight. Hopefully, a decision would be made. So right now, yeah, we don't know what the process is.
Um, I mean, at the Methodist church, we've tried this before. And we've gotten maybe one person. Um, people are dying. People have frostbite terribly bad. They're losing feet, toes, fingers. It's bad. Legs, you know, one young gentleman has to spend the rest of his life in Linda Vista or whatever it's called now in Ashland because he's had frostbite so bad. And, you know, I've talked to the hospital about this and they aren't prepared to come tonight, but she will be here next week, or next time you guys have council. And frostbite is millions of dollars of hospital stay and millions of dollars of rehab. But also, you know, you have to go to the hospital and right next to you is a homeless person who I'm sorry, but stinks and now rotting flesh. Isn't that wonderful? And on the floor, when they have to go to the hospital floor and stay there for weeks in the same room with you. Great. And we could, we could curve that, curve that, and they agree with me by using their shipping containers, two of them, one at base camp and one by the schoolhouse. People could actually come down, get warm, and go back up and not get frostbite. You're putting it at the Methodist church just so that none of you.
One second. The comment is on the approval of.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
I'm getting there.
Of the, um, church is what we need to get at.
I'm getting. So you're putting it on the approval of the church when it's so far away? And all of those people on that hill? They're not gonna go there because they have to leave all their stuff. It's insane and it's a waste of taxpayers' money.
Any other public comment? All right, I'll close public comment. Okay. What are the wishes of the council? And if you're sleepy, we're on.
I think we need to spend some time coming up with some direction for the city manager if we want to get this thing going ASAP. So I think we need, it's incumbent upon us to figure out when it's gonna, when the, what's the triggering? For you, for using a shelter. What are the triggers?
We need to give it to him tonight.
Okay, well, state, who, go for it. Do you want to go first? I'm.
Yeah, right. I would say inclement weather such as rain and snow coupled with cold, cold temperatures, definitely. I mean, you know.
Can you clarify cold temperatures?
That's, no, it's, i- if we go with thirty-two, it's, uh, then it's gonna be thirty or forty nights a year. And so, um, that's where I'm looking also to my fellow council members for input. that's where I'm looking also to my fellow council members for input.
Councilman Claire?
Didn't you say, uh, city manager, city manager, that we could, this could be left up to you that you could make the decision as far as the trigger points? Or is that something we need to decide or you actually could?
Yeah, I think your best leaving it open ended and left up to the judgment of myself to be completely honest with you. But ultimately this is, uh, this is a difficult, um, this is a difficult topic for everybody. I know that council member Baker has attended some supervisor meetings lately and they've talked about this very subject and we've gotten our hands on what their plan is. But ultimately it's very open ended. There is no actual, within that document, there is nothing that states at this point we're going to do this. It's really more of the confluence of multiple things coming together, um, that were listed. And so you have, um, the temperature itself, the wind chill, and then the precipitation. And so in the past, let's say you have 18 degrees or 19 or 20 or 21. A lot of the times the council would not really advocate for a warming center at that time. But if you had a major snowstorm that had just transpired and it was, there was snow on the ground or it was moist on the ground, then we would consider that the elements really, um, were very, very harsh and that ultimately combined with 19 degrees, we would just open up a warming center. But it's really hard to put it in writing and give yourself that limited structure because you're then either opening one all the time or you're never opening one at all based off of that. So I advocate that you guys leave it relatively loose for the judgment of somebody. And I'm just, that just happens to be my position. And we did these warming centers for a couple of years and it seemed like we made some decent decisions at that point. But ultimately if you guys have another, um, thought on it, I'm, I'm totally open to taking your direction.
Thank you. Yeah, I would be adding piggyback off that and I would be fine leaving it into the direction and discretion of the city manager. Just my opinion.
Hey, Councilman Claire. I guess I'll go. I guess I just will go back to the store. We recently had, um, where the roads were closed. Mr. Ledbetter was stuck in Portland coming back. Shasta, uh, it was hit hard down in Mount Shasta area. So I, I would think a storm of that magnitude would justify, of course, for sure that a warming shelter would be open because we had snow on the ground closures. Um, but at that time we had no facility. And so I'm just kind of looking at that big storm of how cold it was and a lot of snow on the ground. You know, roads were closed. I mean, it was really cold. Um, I know, I can't remember what the temperature was, but it was freezing. So I would look at that magnitude of a storm for it to be open.
And I'm glad.
That helps.
I'm glad you, well, I'm glad you're pointing that out because I just want everybody to know that I would not have advocated for a warming center that night because it was 33 degrees in Wairika. And there was, you know, a foot of snow on the ground in Mount Shasta and it was substantially colder. But we were in this weird banana belt here in Wairika. I was stuck up in Ashland actually coming down because I couldn't get over the passes were closed. But, you know, that may, it, you know, may sway us knowing that there's these issues everywhere else that then maybe we are, you know, especially the freeway being closed ultimately. Maybe that, maybe that's an indicator that, you know, road closures.
Yeah. And when I say the storm, I was talking about, it wasn't here, but it was cold. But like the Mount Shasta area when it was hit hard, that type of temperature, that type of storm is what I was trying to get at. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That makes, that makes sense. Thank you.
Councilman Baker? Anything?
Um, you know, I would like to see the decision to open a warming center left to the discretion of the city manager.
And I, I'm sorry to interject, I still would like to, um, talk to Mr. Jared about the liability and, and the decision-making process, um, before you guys make any determinations.
Okay. So tonight we just, of course, there's some things that will come into place, but we just are looking for the motion to approve the actual monies to move forward and then everything will come with talking to Mr. Jared, liability, them signing something, all that good stuff comes along.
That's what I'm curious about with, uh, what the perspective for legal liability, what, uh, Mr. Jared would suggest based off of a program like this.
Okay.
And then if that's the case, if there are more documents to come forward, then you just would need to direct us and we would bring those items, um, forward for you guys to make a vote on at a future meeting.
All right. Thank you. Counsel. Councilman McCoy.
Um, I'll go ahead then and the recommended city council action, make a motion to approve the City of Wairika Warming Center Grant Program and allocate $6,000 for the 20, 2024, 2025 fiscal year budget.
I'm sorry. I, I think that there's some unanswered questions that the city attorney needs to chime in.
Oh, you want him to chime in now?
Yeah, as far as liability and, um, and paperwork that may need to come. Or if this is satisfactory, I don't know. That's, uh, if there's any way, um, for Mr., is Mr. Jared?
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, what's your take on, um, this grant program? What type of documentation would you feel that the city, uh, was required to have, uh, for an applicant? And then what type of liability does the city have for funding one of these warming centers at someone else's site? Is there, um, some paperwork or documentation that you would advise that we put together? Or is it appropriate to move forward as this?
So I, I think that you have, um, the more you get into reviewing a site, um, setting parameters for a site, um, the more liability you're going to have. I, when this was first, um, discussed informally, um, a- as far as the city hosting at another location, of course, the, the, that type of city involvement brings direct oversight. Um, with that does come liability, with that also comes, um, a greater price tag. Um, and so, um, we discussed internally about, um, simply having a grant um, to, for a service provider to provide, um, to, that is going to do homeless services, um, to seek a grant. Um, I think the more conditions you put on that, um, the more you're involved in the, the actual operation of that facility. And so my recommendation is that it, um, it was, um, very minimal, um, in just a dollar amount. Um, and even on a per night basis. The issues of, well, what does that entail? What kind of services? Who gets it? Who doesn't get it? What requirements of that? Yeah, that leads us down a path. Um, when this concept was first, um, talked about just a week or two ago internally, um, that's when it was one provider, um, a known, um, quantity at a known location that just needed some funding assistance with it. As this is becoming more of a program, I do agree you would probably need more in terms of, um, qualifying people, um, and so forth. And with that does come increased liability. So, um, if it's, if it's simply a, a grant to provide homeless services, um, I, I think you can get away with, um, minimal, um, oversight as it gets into more, um, detailed, you're going to need more oversight. And, um, in both cases, you cannot escape liability.
Okay, thank you. I think that clears it up for me that it, it sounds like to me that what we have here is, um, uh, something that would be appropriate for you guys to vote on tonight, in my opinion, but, um, yeah, that's how I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Motion still standing, um, Councilman McCoy?
Yeah, motion stands.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman McCoy. And a second from Councilman Claire. I'll do roll call. Councilman Claire? Councilman, uh, Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
And yes, Mayor Middleton, motion passes five to zero. Okay. Rolling on city manager, brief statements and announcements.
Uh, we still have one more item.
Oh, do I do I miss one?
Yeah.
Oh, shoot. Yes, I'm rushing ahead here. Um, so 10C, this is the closure of Wairika Greenway for vegetation removal and fire danger safety. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairika City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, City Manager, City of Wairika. So the City of Wairika is a wildland urban interface, otherwise known as a wooie, surrounded by grasslands and forests. Uh, the City of Wairika has a greenway and several watersheds running through the city. There are four primary watersheds of Juniper Creek, Upper Wairika Creek, Greenhorn Creek and Humbug Gulch. Uh, they produce, uh, tributaries to the northerly flowing Wairika Creek to the Shasta and Klamath Rivers. There's also Mill Creek in the North Fork of Green, uh, Greenhorn Creek to Greenhorn Creek, uh, Juniper Creek and Upper Wairika Creek to the confluence of Greenhorn and Wairika Creek, Humbug Gulch and Little Humbug Gulch to Wairika Creek. Uh, these riparian corridors naturally provide fuel for a possible high danger wind-driven fire. Similar to the Almeida Fire that burned from Ashland, Oregon to Medford, Oregon on September 8th, 2020, the Almeida Fire started approximately 38 miles north of the City of Wairika in a location with similar terrain and wildland urban interface. In just a matter of hours, the Almeida Fire destroyed 3,000 acres containing 2,600 homes and 600 businesses in Talent, Phoenix, Ashland and Medford, which according to Talent City Manager, made the city look like a bomb blast that has just leveled everything. The fire destroyed more than 11 miles of riparian vegetation of the Bear Creek Greenway and several tributaries. For weeks after the fire, the murky creek weaved through a dark expanse of deep gray ash. It was designated the worst fire in Oregon history. That afternoon, the South, uh, Obenchain Fire near Eagle Point and Butte, also in Jackson County, burned another 33 homes and dozens of other buildings. In 2021, a wildfire called the Lava Fire burned more than 13,300 acres near the Siskiyou County cities of Mount Shasta and Weed to the south of Wairika. In Wairika on June 9th, 2022, uh, incident 2022-887 occurred where a home, whereby a homeless camper started an illegal campfire which became uncontrolled. The fire was adjacent, uh, Siskiyou County, but Siskiyou County Behavioral Health. The dangers posed by the Almeida Fire extended beyond the fire risk posed by the initial fire itself. The long-term risk also includes, uh, water quality concerns, toxic materials and debris from burned homes and businesses, land erosion and impacts on aquatic health. The California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection states, most of the large fires in Siskiyou, uh, in the Siskiyou unit over the past 50 years have been wind-driven fires. The Siskiyou unit identifies citizen and firefighter safety, residential and commercial structures, watershed, water, timber, rangeland, wildlife and associated habitat, infrastructure, air quality, unique areas, recreation, soil erosion and hydroelectric power at risk to wildfires for the City of Wairika and surrounding area in the Siskiyou unit region. The primary purpose of the Wairika Community Wildfire Protection Plan, otherwise known as the CWPP for Wairika, is to provide guidance that enhances protect, protection of human life and helps Wairika area communities become more resilient to wildfire. The Wairika Community Wildfire Protection Plan assesses that the values at risk for Wairika include structures, critical infrastructure, businesses and other tangible elements. Values also include intangible elements such as natural resources, sensitive species, cultural and historical resources, visual resources and residents' perspectives of these intangible elements around them. Human life safety was identified as the top priority for the Wairika area in the CWPP. Recent wildfires that have threatened the area include the 2018 Klamathon Fire and the 2020 Badger Fire resulting in public evacuations, firefighter and civilian injuries and one civilian death. The City of Wairika has worked over the last four plus years to gain compliance with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, otherwise known as CDFW, for an access, uh, permit to work in the creek and remove vegetation, commonly referred to as a 1600 permit. The 1600 permit is what will allow for the vegetation removal to happen compliantly with state law. Prior to the new laws regarding 1600 permits, the County of Siskiyou Day Reporting Center would work with the City of Wairika Public Works team to help maintain overgrowth along the greenway of Wairika Creek. Since the retirement of a key law enforcement officer that managed this program, the use of the Day Reporting Center along Wairika Creek is now obsolete. The combination of that retirement and the changes in the 1600 permit have led to an excess of growth and fire danger along the Wairika Creek Greenway. As the city manager, I am recommending the closure of the Wairika Creek Greenway for up to 24 months to allow staff to work with local agencies to mitigate the vegetation fire hazard on the Wairika Creek and implement a large-scale project to remove vegetation that meets the compliance of the CDFW 1600 permit. Uh, later this month, I'll be meeting with the local, uh, the local manager for CDFW that manages this permit with the Public Works Director. And we'll be developing a plan for vegetation removal that needs to happen over not just this year, but next year and the following years to come as we're only allowed to remove so much vegetation to our knowledge in any given year. But we're going to get those answers, uh, when we meet with, uh, Stephanie Hauptmann on, I believe, the 30th. But after watching what happened in Los Angeles and after being very concerned about the Wairika Creek for many, many years actually, and knowing that the vegetation has really built up, I really advocate, uh, that the city council tonight discuss the possibility of a closure on the greenway that would coincide with say, uh, spring, uh, April 1st or mid-March, uh, closure that would then allow city staff, uh, to contract in with our own masticator, get in, uh, unobstructed to do major vegetation removal to bring safety to the city for fire danger. And I just want to make a couple of statements that we have an encampment on Campus Drive and there's an anticipation of a homeless shelter opening, uh, on Highway three that butts up to the Wairika Creek. And so there are some people camping on Wairika Creek, but this has nothing to do with homeless at all. We're not advocating to go over there right now and remove people. It is the winter time. What we're advocating or what we're sounding the bell here on is that we are of a huge danger. You, it doesn't matter. There was a fire that started on the 4th of July on the Wairika Creek. It was not started by a homeless individual. It was started by someone lighting fireworks, uh, from the freeway. And so this has nothing to do with homeless individuals. It just has to do with the safety of the community. And so I don't want the two issues to seem like that they're even related in any, any way whatsoever. Uh, I am advocating to close the Wairika Creek Greenway with or without a homeless population in the City of Wairika. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Okay. Discussion, questions, comments from council? No, I have public comment afterwards. We can do you guys first.
Can you include in your circle California Department of Transportation to clean up not only the health, but the fire mess that is to the north and south of the Minor Street Bridge as you come into Wairika? Uh, I, I, I think I've, I don't think I'm hitting you blind. I think I've chatted with you about it, but it may have been nine months or a year ago, but it is just so overgrown and there's so many snags laying in the water there that I'm concerned that if we had a, like a, when was it? Not 2000 and when was the last flood? That, that it would, uh, take out that whole lower end.
Yes, and is this, this isn't headed out towards Montague? This is, uh, minor going to Foothill?
Yeah, this is going up, yeah, Foothill toward the old Coca-Cola bottling plant, yeah. And you'll see it. I mean, if you stop, if you drive past the statue or whatever, you walk past the statue and then you go to one side of the bridge and the other side, not the overpass, the bridge. You will see it. And it's been like this for, oh, probably two or three years. And there are snags in it and stuff that's come down and, but you know, you've got brush that's probably six, eight feet tall.
Yeah, and I should have stated that ultimately we have a member of the community that's very active in wanting to, uh, help clean up garbage and really help, um, facilitate a, um, abatement project for vegetation. And so we did end up meeting with this individual, um, at the Kedok Housing Authority and he brought, he was capable of getting, um, CDFW law. And he brought, he was capable of getting, um, CDFW law enforcement. I think we had three individuals, three different game wardens, um, at the location. We had the Kadok with us. And so we're looking at a kind of a coalition building in order to resolve this issue. And so we would certainly invite Caltrans, the Forest Service owns property on Wairika Creek as well. And that's actually exactly what we're looking for. We're looking for an actual, we're looking for a long-term solution, um, rather than just kind of, um, you know, slowly, barely working our way through. We're looking for all hands on deck, and we would be advocating that Caltrans join us in that effort.
Thank you, Councilman Baker.
Um, I thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. I'm very supportive of this, um, um, this closure, uh, for all the reasons that you've stated. It's my understanding, um, through conversations with you, that the city of Wairika does not actually own all of the affected property. And when you and I have walked the, the greenway last summer, um, my memory is saying that the US Forest Service owns part of that property. So would that be included in the cleanup?
The, the 16, well, we're going to discuss that with CDFW on the 30th. Currently, currently our, um, our 1600 permit only includes our property, but we're going to get clarification on private property. Um, generally speaking, it's a lot easier for private property owners to get a one-day or one-off 1600 permit. That's just one or two pages. Ours is 500 pages long, you know, it's just different when you're a government agency. But yeah, ultimately you are correct is that unfortunately, and it's something to consider really when we look forward on a lot of projects is, is that the Greenway project, it's still nowhere near finished. But if you were just to come to town, you would assume that it's completely completed because Deer Creek has signage in a parking lot and a restroom uh, that shows a map of, uh, one side of town to the other side of town. Oberlin has the same, uh, similar setup. Um, and ultimately that's just folks getting ahead of themselves many, uh, years ago, where technically what should have happened is there should have been purchasing of more property before any installation of a greenway or walk path. Um, and I think when we did walk it, there's a point that you come up to Forest Service property and you have to get into the creek in order to pass it, uh, in order to continue on to Oberlin. And so ultimately we would be partnering and we would be working with, um, I don't know if he's here tonight, Mark Atwood. Um, he takes care of a lot of that private property, and so we would be partnering with him. And then we would be asking these questions at, uh, to CDFW at the end of the month.
Um, thank you. And the reason that I brought that up is that I would just, uh, feel very frustrated as a council member, uh, to give the approval for the city to do the cleanup along the greenway and then have huge, um, areas of it that we can't touch.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we would advocate to clean it all up if possible.
Thank you.
Councilman, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Claire?
Yeah, we have some bridges that you can move by hand that ultimately we would be able, yes, absolutely. We would be really bringing back the idea of that kind of walking path just to a real safe, um, to a safe and acceptable hazard level for fire danger to the city. But ultimately while we're down there, then we would be rectifying all of the issues that have built up over the last six years, including bridges that aren't, um, that need to be put back into place. Yeah.
Councilman Claire? Does Dave say anything?
Um, this, this is a good project, and I, I hope that we're able to move forward with it. I think that we can close sections at a time off, not the whole thing. That's just kind of what I was thinking. Um, and you, like you could close off a section down to the Forest Service, back up to where Walmart is and clean that up. And when that's done, we move to a section below the Forest Service, including the Forest Service and so on. And you do that over a couple of year time, Mr. Ledbetter. I think that would be good.
Just to be clear, I'm advocating for a complete closure of every piece of greenway the city owns until it's cleaned up. Um, just because I believe if it, it just makes it a lot easier that nobody should be on the greenway, and it would be alarming to see that. And then ultimately, uh, we would have law enforcement engaged, whoever's down there. Um, just because I'm concerned that even, um, you can start a fire in an area that, that has been masticated, and it can slowly work its way to an area that has a ton of vegetation overgrowth. So that's my, what I'm advocating for, but I certainly would be totally open if you guys wanted to piece, piece it out. Um, that's totally acceptable too. And then I'm not sure the legality of this or how, um, this has to play out, but I am assuming that Mr. Jared would be, um, drafting some type of document. So if we can get his opinion on this, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Uh, so yeah, we've been trying to discussing this since the fires up in Talent and Phoenix, and it is a, just a recipe for disaster in the Wairika Creek area. And I advocate for a complete closure of it. Um, if you're going to have crews going and cleaning it up, you just don't migrate people down or to use it while you have equipment and cleanup. And that's a safety concern if they're going to be in the way of equipment and work and, um, a huge liability. Um, and, and let's face it, it's going to need a complete overhaul. It's been overgrown, not used well, and it's going to take probably every bit of the two years to get it back in shape where our citizens can use it for what it was intended for. And I totally support the closure. The liability, I think, looking forward is having our whole, um, town burn down and, um, a fire starting there and burning houses down and heading down towards our, you know, infrastructure and the towers up on Butcher Hill for the communications. And so it's a, it's a recipe for disaster for many bad things. And so I support the full closure as well. Public comment, and then I'll go to the attorney and then public comment. Okay, no public comments. So I'll go to, um, Mr. Jared for a quick comment regarding this issue and the closure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So is the question of is what the process would be to do this?
Yes, yes, exactly. Um, the legality of it and the process. Um, and then I'm advocating the implementation. We would have time where we would be, uh, if this were possible, uh, that we would be bringing something back and that the start date would not be until, um, mid-March or the 1st of April.
Right. So if there is an immediate fire issue, um, I believe it was some months ago that, um, I provided some direction on that. Um, that if there's an immediate fire danger, the fire marshal can use his powers to close any area. Um, here we also have the issue of the Clean Water Act type issues that are, um, that have been, uh, brought to my attention now. So I think we've got multiple grounds to, uh, approach this. As far as what documents need to be prepared, um, I don't know. Um, I haven't been directed to, to research that and, um, but I think it would be along the lines of, um, if we're not going to do an immediate order by the fire chief, then, um, order for cause by the city council um, might be required. Um, but I, I think we could probably achieve the goal of protect the city. Um, don't allow places, uh, where it might catch on fire, um, with the fire, uh, marshal's, um, abilities.
That's perfect. I appreciate that. And ultimately, if that's okay, it sounds like Mr. Jared is, um, knowledgeable about some pathways. So I would just work with him on our Monday morning conversations that we have. And then we would prepare to bring something back to you, probably at the end of February, beginning of March.
All right.
Just to clarify, I mean, if there's council direction to proceed ASAP with this about the fire issues, um, I think that there might be a way to do that immediately as well.
I'm not sure if they have that concern. I don't have that concern at the moment. The moist here, I am just, but I am thinking, Mr. Jared is similar. I mean, you just lived through an absolute nightmare where you're at. And we've got this perfect storm of, we have a ton of precipitation and temperate weather. And if it's a warm spring, I think there's going to be even more vegetation growth. So, um, I think we're okay unless the council wants it sooner.
Think we're okay. Yep.
Then I'm good. I don't need a vote or anything. We would just bring something back to you guys to, um, if it required the vote. Otherwise, we may have a different pathway with the fire marshal.
All right. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to item number 11. Brief or nothing.
Yeah, and, uh, the only thing I'll say is I've mentioned it before, but I did attend a meeting about, um, Wairika Creek and, uh, this very topic. Um, and it was very successful. And now we're going to meet with, uh, CDFW on the 30th. That's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Davis, quick, any announcements? Or reports? No? Yes. Nope. Maybe I did. I don't know.
I attended that meeting that Mr. Ledbetter was talking about where we walked the greenway a bit. And then, uh, at a later time, we met up at the Krueck Housing to discuss the possibilities that were there. Um, Mr. Atwood invited me, and so I did not turn him down. Um, I'm, I'm actually am quite interested in the greenway and its success. So I'm glad to be involved in that.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker?
Uh, thank you. And, uh, I want to begin by saying thank you, Mr. Ledbetter, for hardening Wairika. I mean, the tragedy that's happening in Southern California, um, is, it's just beyond words. And I'm so grateful, um, that under your leadership, Wairika really is being protected from, from wildfire. And I just want to give you a shout out.
Well, thank you, and thank you guys for, um, supporting it.
Um, in addition to that, uh, on January 7th, I attended a Board of Supervisors meeting where warming centers were discussed. And, um, the Office of Emergency Services is going to bring a policy forward to the Board of Supervisors that defines mutual aid to incorporated cities. Um, and on January 10th, I toured the base camp with the city manager and a member of the Board of Northern Valley Catholic Social Services. We also took a look at the pallet, uh, shelter location, which is looking really, really good. On January 11th, I volunteered at Upper Angels Spay and Neuter Clinic where, uh, 47 feral cats received services. And, uh, January 14th, I attended a LAFCO meeting where, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down and my mind is too cold. But I did attend a LAFCO meeting that had to do with tax sharing agreements and, uh, discussion about that and, uh, the possibility of LAFCO coming up with a master, um, tax sharing agreement that would streamline the process for the cities. But they have to go back and confirm that their policy won't conflict with the policy that the Board of Supervisors adopted last summer. Um, and on January 17th, I also attended the meeting about the greenway, um, with Mr. Ledbetter. And let me see. Um, on January 28th, I am meeting with Laura Leach, um, to discuss the Wairika Citizen of the Year recognition. Um, and I'm not, uh, I'm just going to listen to her ideas. Oh, and one of the things that I would like, um, to consider to be brought back at a future agenda in the near future is an action item to add two additional items to each agenda. Um, um, and that would be roll call. And then approval of the agenda. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Baker. Councilman Claire? Anything? Nothing? Councilman McCoy?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I talked to a couple of people, one that came out from New York and one from Reading. They went to the Sippin Shop and loved it. They loved being able to go from store to store, shop, have a little glass of wine, that sort of thing. Um, so I wanted to let, that's something that I think kind of gets lost, but it was a, a good thing. Um, I'm going to ask Mr. Ledbetter to add to the agenda on February 4th of a presentation on the new Ringy Pool and where we are currently to go over that. Um, seeing as we don't have a protocol yet, we don't have an ordinance to decide how we put things on. I, I feel very comfortable in doing that, uh, to put things on the, uh, agenda. Um, I would also like to add on, uh, a bi, a bi-monthly report to this council uh, from the city attorney during this time on, uh, activities, uh, including, uh, who he's met with on the council and, and, uh, the nature of meetings and, because since he does, again, work for all of us, he doesn't work for one of us. Um, um, then he needs to at some point in time tell us what's going on with all of us. So I'm going to ask, uh, that Mr. Jared appear, um, uh, at every regular meeting. Um, I also am, uh, going to implore this council, uh, and the city man, with the city manager's help to find an attorney or presenter to go over the council on the code of, to go over the code of conduct. And, uh, we can then perhaps go over ordinances and protocols and that sort of thing. Um, since it hasn't been done over the last eight months, um, it needs to be done. Um, unfortunately, it's, it's just, it's gone on too long. Um, I'm asking, uh, also Mr. Ledbetter to begin the process to put electricity into parking lots on the backsides of Minor Street. Um, uh, we have three city parking lots, uh, two on the north, one on the south side of Minor Street. Uh, it doesn't cost a dime to the city to put, um, electric chargers in. Whether or not any of us agrees with the, with electric cars, it's, it's a material, it's tax dollars. People are stopping now out at Rayleigh's. They're spending all their money out there. We need to put our money where our mouth is. I, I've talked to, yeah, probably almost every, probably every single business on Minor. They are, they would be so excited if they could get electric chargers for electric cars. Because then you feel people would come and spend money in the 35 or 45 minutes that they have to charge. Uh, and then I'd like to just go over something, and I'd like to, I don't know how we, how we put it on, but I'd like for the attorney to discuss with us here in person, um, the idea that I had to be voted on when I had a heart attack, that I had to be voted on in order to miss some meetings. But, uh, Councilman Davis did not have to be voted on to miss meetings. Uh, again, I don't know why he was gone. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not intimating that. But I, I, you know, I, I, I need, that needs to be explained to the whole council. Needs to be made public. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking that to be scheduled with, uh, the city attorney and do it here in open session. We've got nothing to hide. Neither, neither Councilman Davis or I have anything to hide. Again, it's, this, this makes it more, I'm, I'm not totally aware of what happened. Obviously, when you have a heart attack and you're going, you're being medevac and you're having stuff done, you, you, you're not thinking about other stuff. I'm not, I apologize, but I wasn't thinking about city council. I was thinking about, well, you know, if I die, I got to make sure all this stuff is, make sure Connie gets all this stuff in order. Um, so I would, yeah, I, that needs to be explained to me.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman McCoy. Well, on to that point, I mean, it does come public because this has been submitted, because, um, the citizen has, um, delivered seven copies. This is now public record for review. And it should be brought back to us for discussion on where it missed the cracks and why it wasn't brought to our attention by the attorney or explanation. So it does need to be discussed on what happened here. Um, so for me, I'm just going to make it real quick. I attended the Lola meeting, um, at the casino in the new section where they have their, um, what do they call it? Their convention, convention center that's, um, occupied half. James was there for a little bit. Um, Councilman Davis was there. Councilman McCoy, um, good speakers, uh, really good speaker about housing, um, I forgot, I'm spacing her name. I'm sorry. I'm tired and cold. I'm a county.
Madeline Brian.
Madeline Brian. She kind of did a recap of housing, um, so it was a refresher of where the monies come from, a good reminder of what they've been doing, where it's coming from, the allocation of costs from other cities. the allocation of costs for other cities, different projects, one going in Mount Shasta now and several coming here in Wairika down the road, hopefully. So great meeting, great food. Yeah. So I don't, you know, I'm not, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus or anything of laws, but I've been getting a lot of complaints lately. We need to probably start working. I've been getting a lot of complaints about the dogs running loose up in, you know, Campus Drive. I've heard from three people that they've been chased, three people that work at COS aggressively by dogs, no leashes. So three people have reached out to me that work at the college and work in an office by the college and behavioral health that they've been chased by aggressive dogs. So we really need to get a handle on, I don't know, enforcing leash laws or something up there. It's getting bad with the roaming dogs. So if we can definitely have a discussion or whatever needs to happen, there is, I've gotten several calls about that. With that said, I'm going to call it a night. We're all cold. We're all tired. And wish everybody a good evening and we'll see you soon. Meeting adjourned. Good night.